Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Fluehling.
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Approval of minutes. Resolution 2025-1535 from March 5th. Is there a motion to approve-
I'll move it.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ten minutes from the March 19th meeting, Resolution 1536, is there a motion to approve?
The moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carried. Is there any public comment to the committee? Come on up, sir. We have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Robert Briger. I live at 1054 DeWajack Avenue in Genesee Township. On my way out here this evening, my neighbors let their dogs loose. I couldn't get out my driveway. I opened the gate. I called Animal Control and they came and they were chasing the dogs down. I went to get records from Animal Control and they said I have to go use the portal on the Internet. And I sought help from the administration there at the Animal Control. We're unable to get through to the portal to get the records. They suggested I ask the Commissioners to make it somehow possible for us to go in person somewhere and be able to request those. And that was just an issue that just popped up. I came here to address an issue of the township removing a fence from my property in charge of my property tax, $950. I was not given any notice of the hearing. It was all done behind my back. I put in a new fence, cost me almost $10,000 with the survey and the fence, to prevent a neighbor from carrying out death threats against me and harassment and vandalism and trespassing. And when I put up the new fence, he started making complaints with the township about blight of the old fence while I was removing it. They didn't give me enough time. They wrote a ticket, the Code Enforcement Officer, Genesee Township, and had a hearing in the court, 60 Summit District Court. And they misspelled my name, didn't send it to my post office box. I'd never received any notices. And the court is blaming the township, Code Enforcement, the township's blaming the court. But my due process was violated. I could not defend myself. And I would have had the time to carry out the court order before there was any removal by the township and their costs put on my taxes.
Sir, would you mind spelling your last name for me?
Briger. B-R-I-E-G-E-R.
Mr. Briger, what I'd like for you to do before you leave is check with our administrator, Mr. Freeman, and he can help you out with those issues.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
And is there any additional public comments? Yes. Marissa, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Pierce. I am the Chair of the Explore Flint and Genesee Advisory Committee. I also serve as the Director of Development and External Relations at the Flint Institute of Arts Museum and Art School. And I'm here today just to show my support in the continuation of the contract for Explore Flint and Genesee. My relationship began, actually began with them 20 years ago. My first job was at the CVB as their manager for special events and public relations. And I believe that support of this organization is really an integral part to the success of not just Flint and Genesee County and the Cultural Center, but all of the great people, institutions, and organizations that are a part of our county. The CVB is just one important tool in our toolbox to promote our community and all of the great things and works that we have going on. And I wholeheartedly support the continuation of that contract, not only as an employee of the county, but also as a resident in Flint Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. And I want to remind people to say your township or where you live in addition to your name.
Yes.
And so, yeah, we know where you live.
Flint Township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, come on up.
Thank you. I wrote it down. I'm not as good as her. I'm a little nervous. I'm Ed Colito. I live at 4093 Mini Tonka Drive in Lyndon, Michigan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I serve as the Executive Director for Southern Lakes Parks and Recreation and the Fenton Community and Cultural Center. I also sit on several boards and committees across southern Genesee County. I'm here to express my strong support for continuing the contract with Explore Flint and Genesee as Genesee County's official convention and visitors bureau. While I've been aware of the Explore Flint and Genesee since 2021, my connection has grown significantly through two key initiatives. First, in helping bring the Gus McRae Three-on-Three Basketball Tournament back to Flint. I've seen firsthand how essential Explore Flint and Genesee has been. Their team, resources, and network of doers, and you know how it is when people know how to get stuff done, and Mari's right behind me. Their team, resources, and network of doers has been instrumental in overcoming challenges and making the event a success. Second, the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program has been an incredible asset, not only for me personally, but also for members of my staff. It offers meaningful training, valuable connections, and ongoing networking that strengthens our ability to represent the region. Explore Flint and Genesee plays a vital role in supporting new events and promoting the culture and historical richness of our communities. Their work tells our story and helps it grow. I'm currently working with several partners to bring a CTA training to southern Genesee County. That opportunity would disappear without this organization's support. Simply put, Explore Flint and Genesee is too valuable a resource to lose. I fully support the continuation of their contract as Genesee County's Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional public comments? Additional public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I am Birdie Brooks, and I live in Flint, Michigan, Genesee County. And I'm here. My name is Birdie Brooks. I have volunteered with Explore Flint and Genesee for over 20 years. I have also been a Certified Tourist Ambassador since the first session. I am here today to ask you to renew the contract with Explore Flint and Genesee as Genesee County's Convention and Visitors Bureau. As a CTA and a Flint Spark, I've had the opportunity to be a part of community events like the Crem and Back to the Brits. And I just, I've visited attractions all over the community. I'm looking forward to be a tourist in your hometown event again this year. I've lived here most of my life and still working with Explore Flint and Genesee. I've seen parts of this community I didn't even know were here myself. A lot of people don't understand Flint and Genesee County. They think about General Motors, which I'm not going to talk bad about. I'm a General Motors ex-employee, so, and which, that General Motors is great, but we're more than that. We need people who can tell the story of our community to bring people and business here. We've got things for people to do. We've got places for people to stay. We've got places for conventions. We have to make some people know that. With Explore Flint and Genesee, we have ambassadors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Are there additional public comments? Going once, going twice? Public comments are closed. All right. Do we have, we have communications. I think three communications for the committee tonight. First of all, number 25110, the American Rescue Plan Act update. And I think someone from our metro planning department will come up and give us an update.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Dan Moulton is our ARPA person, ARPA Dan, we like to call him. He's been involved in implementation of this. He's going to kind of walk through just a status update on where we're at and all the funding that we have. So go ahead.
Thank you, Derek, and good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Yeah, so like you mentioned, I'm going to run through my primary work assignment, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, and hopefully provide you with some updates as to how things are going. So, just very briefly, the American Rescue Plan Act took effect in April of 2022. It's been around for three years now. $350 billion was the total amount in the act, and the main goals were to combat COVID, boost the economy, maintain government service, and improve neighborhoods. Big takeaway here, we received $79 million. So that is what we were given, and that's what we have to work with. In the last year, we had a pretty good year in '24. We closed out 12 projects that we had. We signed contracts for a whole bunch more, including all of our senior centers. The main thing for us was our obligation deadline, which was at the end of December. Basically, we just had to have everything under contract to ensure that all the money had a home going into 2025. So our office, the Planning Commission, we manage $45,700,000 of the 79 total. Crystal and her team of fiscal services manages the remainder. And that is kind of how it is broken down. When you take the total amount that we have and how much it is leveraging into the cost of total of all projects across the entire county and all of our projects that we are more or less than 33% of, you'll see that we have $45.7 million leveraging $548 million total of investment, which I think is a pretty good return. And we'll talk more about that later. So the priorities, obviously, you guys are familiar with the priorities, but we, you know, integrate them in everything that we do. And this chart, I went through at the end of last year and created based on how I felt that our ARPA projects represented each priority. So you'll see, we have a lot of money in communities. Almost two-thirds of the total projects that we have are primarily with communities. But there's also an important piece here for inclusive collaborative culture. These are the projects where the county is stepping up as a facilitator, taking action, and leading community partnerships in order to create larger-scale projects. We also have long-term financial stability, which you'll notice is there in yellow. One of the goals of ARPA funding was to maintain government service, and I think we would be foolish not to invest in ourselves. And so you'll see that those projects, they are reflected in yellow. So I will just run through a few project highlights. Land Bank demos. So we had an original $8 million grant with the land bank. That grant has been completely spent, and they did almost 400 demos front to back with our funding in the city of Flint, Mount Morris Township and Flint Township. We approved an additional $350,000 for them at the end of last year, and that is going to be to demo the apartments in the 4200 block of Clive Road, and that project will be happening later this year. Buick City redevelopment, very timely. Our grant of $3.25 million was spent last year. We had the primary eligible use of removing stormwater and existing drainage beneath the surface of Buick City. Maybe not as glamorous as saying that we were part of Building One Construction, but just as important. You know, we would not be able to further develop that site with our partners of Ash Capital without removing some of the existing infrastructure beneath the surface. Southern Lakes Water, historic, right? This is a huge, huge investment into the county water system, 10 miles of new water line, largest ever in county history. We have worked very closely with Water and Waste on this project, and it is, for the most part, complete. I believe they have a few things that they need to finish up this spring. And we're actually working with them to ensure that Lake Fenton Schools can now be connected through an additional grant that was approved last year. And then, of course, LaFontaine Drive. Obviously, this has been a popular thing happening recently. But what a lot of people may not know is that we do have some of our county ARPA dollars existing in some of the infrastructure that was crucial to this development taking place. We worked very closely, again, with Water and Waste and Monday Township to ensure that this project was a success. And I personally am very excited, not only for the development that is there, but also future development and to what this area along Hill Road will look like in the next five to 10 years. Our community partnership projects are not maybe as linear as our infrastructure projects are, but just as important. Food Bank of Eastern Michigan, that grant will be finished spending this spring, $250,000 specifically for food for Genesee County residents. The YMCA of Greater Flint, $200,000 for interior improvements in technology, furniture, et cetera, for their new building, which is a very exciting portion there. And then, of course, the crown jewel, Burston. You know, we came into this project at a very critical time for Burston. We were able to work with a good team out there and make sure this money was spent. We just drove by there yesterday. It's incredible to see what our funding, the match from Mott, has all unlocked and what will come of that project once it is done. Very exciting. And then, of course, I could not get up here and not talk about our senior centers. You know, $100,000, $1.6 million total doesn't really seem like that much, maybe to you and I, but in terms of the effects that this is going to have for our senior centers, the investments that have already been made, the vans that have been purchased, the interior improvements that have been made that have been needed for years for our senior centers, it really is going to be quite a meaningful project for all 16 centers. So we're very excited to have these happening. And then, just to kind of wrap up here, so this map, kind of hard to see on this screen, but what I will say, main takeaway is we are countywide. There are very few local units of government that I personally have not worked with, have not formed a partnership with. There are very few local units of government where we are not currently or have spent ARPA dollars in some capacity. It would have been very easy for us to maybe only focus on a couple areas or something like that, but through the action of this board and our department, we were able to identify projects across the entire county, which I think is incredibly meaningful. And then, finally, we have two charts here. So the first one, this is our projects with Water and Waste. You'll notice the ones in green are basically complete, closed out. The other ones in white are going to be closing out later this year. And then, this chart here is all the remaining projects. You'll see, again, a lot of projects are closed out. We have a few critical ones to finish this year, and we will get to those in due course. Finally, that last sentence there at the bottom, $1 of county ARPA spent, $12 invested into community. I think that's a great ratio, great return for this kind of unique funding source. And it's been something that I have been very thankful to work on, and it's been really good. So with that, I will take any questions that you may have, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Moulton, for your presentation. That's really good information to have in terms of an update. I want to ask that if you have any questions, you kind of put them on hold for a moment. We have a staff member who has an emergency, and I want to give him an opportunity to do his presentation before he leaves for that emergency. So can I turn it over to the Chair for Government Ops?
Yep. Commissioner Wayhill, it is for item number 12 on your agenda.
Yeah.
2025-1438. It is for a five-year agreement between Genesee County and Vital Core Health Strategies.
I understand it's Captain Kenimer, if you'd come up. And I hear it's actually a good emergency. Is that fair to say? And if you're, if you're, if you would like, you can tell us what's happening.
Uh, yeah.
Something to be proud of.
I'm having my first grandbaby, and so I'm excited. Although county business moves forward, so does my legacy. So I'm looking forward to leaving you guys.
Please proceed.
Thank you for indulging this. So this was the medical RFP for our service providers in the jail. I didn't have a presentation. I was here to answer questions for that. I know it's kind of throwing everyone on a loop for it.
Can you kind of explain why we're here today, what happened, and the process that we went through?
Correct. So our current medical provider, ACH, decided to execute the termination clause of our current medical provider in our jail, which initiated 120-day notice. That expires at the end of May, May 31st. So we worked with risk management, fiscal services, and purchasing to put on RFP in the short notice. We had, it was put out via county policy. We had three entities put in for that contract. The Sheriff's Office with purchasing, fiscal services, and risk management. We had a team to review all the proposals, and we selected as a group Vital Core. It is a substantial increase to our current medical contract, but that was kind of what led to the cancellation of our current contract with ACH.
All right. Do we have any questions for Captain Kenimer?
Uh, yes. Commissioner Winfrey. Different from the proposal that Genesee Health Systems submitted?
They did. Genesee Health Systems did submit a proposal. It was carefully considered with them. They were the highest cost to the, of the people that submitted proposals. And they are a professional organization, but they specialize in mental health. This is to be the first time that they would have bridged the gap into correctional healthcare, if you would. And that, amongst others, was why they weren't selected.
Uh, but didn't that proposal come before us? Did it not? Oh, okay. I must be mistaken. I don't even know how I knew about it, if it didn't, didn't come before us.
They have been on the GHS Board meeting, but it did not come before us.
Okay. All right.
Um, there's a-
I'm sorry. I'm distracted.
Commissioner Shoemaker had a question.
So Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've mentioned an increase. How much are we talking annually?
Uh, the first year is going to be $5.4 million. The lowest bid that we had was 4.6 million. That was through ACH. ACH did increase by 7% a year, and by the end of the contract, there was 100,000 difference between Vital Core and ACH.
So overall contract, we know what the-
Yeah, Crystal, I can't see that far. Is Crystal out there, and she can speak to what those differences are from current fiscal year to the new fiscal year?
Uh, the first year increase is $1.3 million, but then after that, the increases are, are less. So like the second year, it's 131,000. So in total, the increase over five years would be 2.1 million. But to his point, that's not including what the increases would have been under the current carrier ACH.
Well, they're not going to supply us, so we obviously have to do something. It's just that-
Correct.
Thing is, is this is one of those fires that when I say you never know what's going to come up.
Right.
This is an expense we obviously don't have budgeted because we budgeted for the old contract, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Fluehling.
I'd like to move to approve Resolution 2025-1438.
Support. Do we, do we have to call the committee to order later? Can we just approve it later since he's answered all the questions? Because we are still in Government Op, or I'm sorry, Economic Development.
If, if the Commissioners would withdraw the motion, and then we'll-
I'll withdraw.
-take it up under the, when the committee meets. Do we have further questions for Captain Kenimer before he needs to leave to meet his new grandchild? Commissioner Lloyd.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So if I could, and you might have articulated this, and I missed it, what are the services that will be provided?
That was another big selling point with Vital Core. And I will, I'll tell the Commission, too, that two of the Vice Presidents of the company drove here today in anticipation of this and are willing to answer questions from them directly. And I spoke to the company. So they provide both medical and mental health services, which is a big benefit to going with them as opposed to some of the other vendors. They're not subcontracting with it. They actually provide those professionals with us. It's actually an increase in healthcare and mental health services. These are the two individuals I'm speaking of. They're going to provide 1,226 hours total a week of medical and mental health. With that, approximately 200 hours of that is going to be dedicated to mental health. And in Genesee County, that is a massive increase and a win for the citizens.
And the current provider, ACH, is that right?
Yes.
When I, when the sheriff gave me and Commissioner Lloyd a tour of the jail probably early last year, I met the physician that's on staff and some of the folks that are in that office. Are they ACH employees, or are they separate from that?
To, to that question is, they are employed by ACH, but with, working with Vital Core, they are going to be interviewing all current ACH employees. And if they are qualified and can fit with that, they will be having priority selection.
All right. And one of the reasons I'm asking is, it seems to me that there's a fair number of those employees who have some longevity in, in the jail and, you know, know the systems over there and the processes. And so they will have an opportunity, if they wish to do so, to-
They will.
-join the new company. And where does the funding, and maybe this is a crystal question, of course, I should know this, but how do we pay for this? Is it millage funds out of GHS? Or is it general fund?
A portion of it is general fund funded, and then a portion of it comes out of that health services millage for indigene care.
Health services for indigen, which is the Genesee Health Plan?
Uh-
No?
Genesee Health Plan. We contract with Genesee Health Plan and pay for it out of the health services millage.
Yep.
But the millage is Genesee County's, it's not Genesee-
Got it. Okay, okay. Commissioner Kuzno, did you have comment or question?
Excuse me. Can the mental health part of it be billed to the millage for mental health?
Um, we can certainly review that as we are billed on that, yeah. But if you remember, the mental health millage had very specific uses as part of the language that was adopted. So we can review that and see if it's an option.
All right. Do we have any additional questions? And for the folks that came up from the company, what I would suggest is that, once we get to the full committee meeting, if we have questions after the motion is made, we'll, we'll have you come back up. We appreciate you being here. Any additional items for Captain Kenimer? All right. Congratulations, Captain.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. I will turn it back over to Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Commissioner Wayhill, and thank you for your indulgence. The next item for under, well, actually, let's see if we have any questions for Mr. Moulton about the ARPA money and update? Any questions or comments for Dan? Okay. You're in the clear, Dan.
Oh, can, can I just make a comment? So the senior center projects in particular, you, you do a ton of work, so let me start with that. I've been impressed every time I've met a member of the staff, including you. I think I first met you out in Flint Township, maybe, at the senior center there. Gwyneth is also fantastic, and there are others. So the, the volume of work is impressive. Thank you for that. And it's nice to see some of the things that we voted on and, that are actually happening, and we get a report on it. But I'll just say, the senior center's very happy overall, at least in my district, and have a quarterly lunch with the folks in Sorets Creek. And when I did the first one of the year, I think they had just received their van the day before. So they are elated to have transportation, which will not only take them to activities and events, but also, I believe, take them shopping when they don't have their own transportation. So small amount, $100,000 for every senior center, but very meaningful, as you said. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to say thank you for putting all that information in this wonderful annual report- in this wonderful annual report that is available. I think, is it available online?
If not yet, it will be. We also have physical copies as well.
Okay, all right. So I just want the community to be aware that a lot of this information that they just heard about ARPA money and the investment in the communities is outlined in writing in this report. So thank you for all of your good work.
Thank you.
All right. If there are any other questions for Dan, we'll move on to the next communication. Impact Genesee Summit update. So I can give a quick update on that, or really just informational purposes. On June the 5th, we will be hosting our very first countywide economic development summit, which is entitled Impact Genesee. It will be held in conjunction with the University of Michigan Flint, thanks to a grant that we received from the Federal Home Loan Bank of Indianapolis. And the University of Michigan Credit Union is also a sponsor. As of June 5th, we have several breakouts and workout, work sessions planned. We have Shop Genesee, which will focus on mall makeovers. We have Play Genesee, which will focus on the sports tourism industry. We have Build Genesee, which will focus on our housing for working families and communities. We have Transform Genesee, that will reflect on the advanced manufacturing district. And then finally, we have Connect Genesee, which will focus on broadband and the value of speed, quality, and price for broadband. Each and every commissioner around this table will play a role in putting on this conference. And we hope that it will act as a lever and really a catalyst for generating some real impactful economic development in Genesee County. We have some dynamic speakers coming in from out of state, and they've been to where we hope to go. And so we hope to learn a lot from them. So questions from commissioners about that report? You'll hear more forthcoming later. All right, the next report we have or communication is the sports complex discussion. And I think that we've been working with the Flint and Genesee group to help bring that piece to us. And I see Amari Stewart coming up. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. So I'm Amari Stewart, Executive Director of Explore Flint and Genesee. We have been tasked with working with, which we are a group of the Flint and Genesee group. I'm sorry, a division of the Flint and Genesee group, so just for clarification purposes. This initiative that we're working with, that we were contacted by these sports developers, architects, and management facilities. They contacted Explore Flint and Genesee as a convention and visitors bureau. So we've been in the very small infancy stages with continuing that conversation and bringing a sports complex to the area. So I'm going to introduce Gary Johnson with Arco, who is who contacted me, and then he'll introduce the rest of the individuals as well.
Thanks, Amari. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gary Johnson. I am Director of Sports Complex Development for a company called Arco National Construction. We're headquartered in St. Louis. I think we're also in Detroit. We have about 47 offices, I think all told, maybe about a $6 to $7 billion firm. You're probably familiar with Topgolf. Our firm's built about 80 of those around the United States and do all kinds of other sports complexes. And the reason we're here tonight is just to give you just a very high-level overview of why we reached out, why we think your community makes sense for a sports complex. There's a lot of different variables that will have to be considered as you go through the process of deciding whether it works or it doesn't work. But first and foremost, this is an athlete community, right? There's a lot of athletes. It has a history of athletics. Michigan has a history of athletics. It's cold, which is actually, for indoor sports complexes, is one of the first things we look at. It's heavily populated. You have lots of athletes up here. And so from a perspective of fitting, it fits the model of where an indoor sports or indoor/outdoor sports complex would do really well. In your particular case, softball's very popular in your community, as you know, and bringing tournaments in. So it looks like it could be an indoor and outdoor complex. But the athletic component, the history that you have, is one of the reasons that we reached out, the proximity to other population, and quite simply, supply and demand. There's only so much supply of these type of facilities within a driving distance of this community and within a four or five-hour period of time from here. And so it just seemed to make sense. So I reached out to Amari. I work very closely with CVBs around the country. I can tell you that in our experience, and I'm going to introduce the two of our guests with us tonight, they're pretty critical to making these things successful. At least that's been our experience. I'm going to introduce Eric McCafferty from Sports Facilities Companies, who's going to come up. But just to give you an idea on who they are, they operate about 75 sports complexes around the United States, primarily for groups just like yours. Almost all are townships, villages, municipalities that will have a complex, but they don't want to staff it. They don't have the means to staff it. They don't have necessarily the resources to do it. So they'll hire them to come in and do that. And they are the number-one sports facility operator in the United States. And so we have a partnership with them. Also brought with me, Brian Richter. Brian is a sports architect. All he does when he wakes up is design sports architecture around the United States. And so our group came to your county and said, "We think there's some real value in potentially putting a complex here." And what we're going to do next is I'm going to have Eric give you a very high-level overview of what the dollars and cents look like in terms of economic impact. We know you'll have questions. It's very early stages. But we wanted to at least come up, introduce ourselves to you, present some of the data, get some of your questions, and go from there. Does that make sense? Eric?
Great to be here this evening. My name's Eric McCafferty, Vice President with Sports Facilities Companies. We are in our 22nd year of operations. And everything starts with our mission, and that's to improve the health and economic vitality of the communities that we serve. And that's from, you know, driving economic impact through travel sports and all the programming that comes along with those, with that, to these types of venues, but also from a local standpoint of how can we develop and operate programming that everyone in the community can also take part in? So basically, becoming another community hub of activation to promote healthy lifestyles is why we do what we do every day. As Gary said, we've got about, I think we're at 77 or 78 now, facilities that we manage, ranging from the largest sports tourism venues in the country down to local community water parks and everything in between. So we've seen pretty much everything you can at these types of facilities and how they work, how they operate, how they align with CVBs, how they align with Park and Rec to ensure that basically Rising Tide lifts all boats and the amount of activity and programming, economic impact, is making a big impact to the communities. This is a, it's called our concept concrete timeline. So I'll call this, in a perfect world, if funding is in place, go from the concept, right, goals and vision of a community through market feasibility and financial analysis, through implementation, how's it going to get funded, to the construction process through design, and ultimately getting to operations. These things can take a while. As Gary said, this is in our infancy stages, just starting these conversations with the idea. I live down in Westfield, Indiana. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar or ever heard of Grand Park there. It's one of the largest sports tourism facilities in the country. And I've been in the industry ever since I graduated school, about 15 years. I've always thought that Michigan is all, Michigan teams and families are always the one traveling to Ohio, Indiana, Illinois for these types of events. And it'd be nice to kind of give back and kind of allow it to be reversed as we move forward in the future and really cater to local residents from that same point as well. A little bit about Arco. Gary will come back up in a second. We can correct that. But role of CVBs in this process. Currently, our company is at a convention conference called Sports ETA. It's in Tulsa. Last year, our team actually initially met Amari and some of her team there. A lot of CVBs, DMOs, companies like us, event owners that are looking for communities to bring events are all there. And it's a two- or three-day strategic think tank. But CVBs, the venues that we operate, every single one has a thriving CVB that we work in unison with day-to-day and allowing them to, you know, bring events to us. But if there's an event owner or a special event that's in our network in a facility that we manage in Alabama, and they're looking for somewhere else, we work with our CVB partners locally in all of our venues to see if there's a facility locally that could support something like that. Every one of those, we have a relationship. In some cases, they actually are in our offices as well. It's that close of a working relationship. So just really critical to driving the overall destination of Genesee County and Flint. And I don't want that to go unnoticed today as well. Recreation and tourism and kind of where they collide, right? So kind of high level on the left starts with Parks, Rec, more passive recreation, green space, all the way over to convention centers that are driving really large economic impact on the right. And in the middle is kind of where we're talking with sports tourism facility and what that can do. And kind of working together between Parks and Rec, providing local programming to the community where it might be underserved from a facility standpoint, and just providing better experiences, better playing services for the youth with the different activities, combining with economic impact generating events on the weekends to bring people and teams from out of town, in-market, staying in the hotels, buying food, buying the gas, and interacting and just really generating a lot of economic spending day-to-day. The industries collide. So right now, youth and amateur sports tourism industry sits just shy of $40 billion, projected to be in the $60 to $70 billion range in the next five to seven years, with Parks and Rec being at 218. And what we're starting to see is those, they're playing, basically helping each other, kind of going back and forth on events and tournaments, space, local programming, and how do these facilities kind of take the burden off and provide an amazing community hub for everyone to experience locally and when they're coming from out of town. The three-legged stool, so we've got of the industry. We've got the destination, right? That's what we have here. That's what we have with Amari's team. We have event owners, the groups that are bringing teams and events to the market. And we have operators like ourselves, whether that be privatized management, outsourced management, or local Parks and Rec operating the facility. And they all have to work in unison. There's 365 days in a year. The goal for these is to maximize and have utilization as much of those 365 days as possible. And we all have to work together to strive towards that. Tons of different tournament options. There's tons of brands that are popping up and growing, leading to Gary's point about supply and demand. There's new ones that pop up every year that are in our venues and provide really, really quality experiences. Those with a facility like this, you can bring them in and get a critical fill rate quicker because those events are already established, event owners are established. You can also homegrown your events, which is basically, I call them self-operations, where the staff, you're building your own brand, keeping more of the revenue within the facility versus a rental-type of model. But it's just kind of that fine line. And usually, it's a mixture of both to find the sweet spot as far as operations go of these types of facilities. So a performance range, this is very high-level based on an indoor/outdoor facility that has enough court or baseball, softball fields to really get into that sports tourism category. So on the indoor side, we looked at eight basketball courts that are convertible to 16 volleyball courts with some family entertainment in there. Typically, that's like arcade, laser tag, climbing wall, just something for brother or sister to do or the player to do when they're not playing in their tournament. Just also drives a little bit more revenue for the facility as well. But to reach that, I mean, you've got to have this amount of readily available space all under one roof. Makes it really, really attractive to the event owners that are bringing these things in. On the outdoor side, I know listening to Amari and her team, the softball space is really solid for you guys. And so I think doubling down on that, ensuring that that does not go away in the future and that it just grows. We looked at eight regulation turf fields that are convertible into 16 youth baseball/softball. Pretty cool model where you have a full-sized rectangle, but in the corners, you've got dugouts and backstops to where you can host that to fully maximize it. You don't have to fill baseball, softball every weekend. You can move, you know, a weekend or two with lacrosse, a couple of weekends of soccer events to really boost the overall economic impact and obviously local use as well. So we did a benchmarking performance range. You know, complete transparency, like these things, they're not cash cows. They are served as economic impact generators. Typically takes a lot of creative funding resources to make them work and to make them viable and sustainable long-term. They can operate day-to-day in the black, and all of our venues do, based on the goals and visions of the clients that we have. But it just gives you a range on, you know, a low-end type of facility managed on what it can do versus a high-end on that indoor/outdoor model that we just discussed. And economic impact, I mean, this is why many communities decide to build these types of facilities. $36 million annually in direct spending once you get out to the fifth year of operations or you reach sustainability. Big, big number. And I just think it's critical, like hotels, new spending, bringing new people in improves that economic development. And just really, really, it's a great way because it also provides an awesome experience for the local residents as well. It's a win-win for everybody. The ultimate goal is to create a destination partnership, right? Working with Amari and her team, working with hotels. So we're tracking all that impact, right? And ensuring that, you know, if this is a Genesee County facility, then all the hotels, and we're trying to keep everyone inside those parameters, creating cool value propositions. If there's a three- or four-day event, relationships with other local businesses, local attractions to provide tickets for the player and maybe the family members have to go as well. But just the whole community kind of supporting this venue to create an ultimate destination partnership is the goal at the end of the day. And that's what makes them really, really highly successful. I know that was really quick. I want to be respectful of everyone's time here in the public setting, but love to open it up if you guys have any questions, concerns, anything like that.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Gary, and Brian. Thank you, too. Questions from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Lloyd.
Two quick questions. One question is, thanks so much for your presentation. Thanks for being here. This is exciting stuff. Look forward to being able to support something in the future of, you know, we're in agreement. One question is, where's the nearest facility? And my other question is, how many facilities have you all built or been involved with in the state of Michigan?
That's a great question. So going back to my point that the state of Michigan is underserved from this type of facility. SFC, we currently manage one. It's in Holland, Michigan, the Holland Civic Center Place. Our relationship is with the city of Holland there. There are other communities that are also looking at this right now. But currently, we operate one. I would say on the outdoor side, Canton Sports Park is a comparative one. Older by nature, was built a while ago. It's operated municipally. But there is a lack in the market, which leads to, you know, Ohio, Indiana, and Illinois getting a lot of Michigan teams and economic impact from that.
Just a follow-up. I appreciate that. If I may. Do you have a number of how many are like in this region, for instance?
We do. I can provide that to you if you'd like to see that. But on this size and scale and synthetic turf and I would say more state-of-the-art, there are very rare few. But I can follow up and get you that exact number. Thank you.
Yeah, so part of the feasibility study that's been done or that's been looked at is they look at secondary data from a group called Esri. It's one of the groups out there that we can tell you who ate, you know, cornflakes, you know, within, you know, six months ago within a certain area. It's very, very granular. And it will tell you within a 30-mile, 60-mile, 90-mile, 120-mile range where all these complexes are at. We looked at some of that data even before we came to you. So there is a need in this market, whether it's here or it's an hour north or an hour south. This market would do very, very well on paper in terms of driving the amount of athletes here for tournaments. I want to circle back in case it's a question. But when we talk about these things, there's a reason we're here talking to you today. It's because if this was a private development, other than getting your blessing, if it was zoning or something, it'd be great. They don't tend to do really well if they're fully private. And the reason for that is it may cost you $200 to $300 a square foot, depending on the complexity of the facility, to build them. And you may only be renting them out at $30 or $40 a square foot. So the math really doesn't work. The way these things work, and the way you have to think about them for, as an economic engine, is if you can get the sports complex, cost to build it, cost to run it. If you can get that somewhere close to break even, if you can get it somewhere breaking even, and there's ways to do that through the revenue streams that you may use to fund it, you're going to see all the benefit from what Eric talked about earlier about the economic impact. It's the people coming here. It's spending money in the community. It's spending nights in hotels. It's eating in restaurants. It's spending money in your stores. That's why there's 75 other communities that Sports Facilities manages that do this. And it's tremendous value to the constituent because during Monday through Thursday, you can do local programming in there. So it's an asset that the community has that they can use throughout the week for local programming. And then you use, for lack of a better word, other people's money to help fund that project on the weekends when they're bringing tournaments in. And one of the real values Sports Facilities brings is relationships all over the country with tournament directors. I mean, as soon as one of these starts to go into development, they're already making contact saying this complex is coming. they're already making contact saying this complex is coming. So, I just wanted to throw that out so that, to explain that. What questions can we answer?
Other questions? Commissioner Wayhill?
Madam Chair, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. And I'm probably going to ask some things that maybe even some of our folks from the CVB might want to weigh in on. And you've touched on this, but, so there's a feasibility study. Do we have copies of that? Do you know the county?
Have one done. I don't know if they have copies or... Yeah. You don't have a copy of it, but there's...
Okay. And when was that one done? Was that the 2019?
No, it's been, well, there's been several done. You want to come up, Amari? Yeah.
There was a feasibility study done, I believe, in 2019 with Hunter Strategic Partners. So, you guys may or may not have seen that one. That one did not include a pro forma. There was a very rough estimate of a pro forma that was done before they would decide whether or not they would want to meet with us. So, it's not hard numbers. We have, the one we have is with Hunter Strategic Partners, and then the estimated one, which was in this presentation, which I don't necessarily, I have the presentation, but that one is what we reviewed with the estimate.
Okay. And you all don't do feasibility studies. You do?
Yeah. Sports Facilities does feasibility. So, just to give you some perspective, when I first approached Genesee, we had brought in a group that does feasibility studies. They came in, did a feasibility study with secondary data and a lot of hard numbers in it. There were a few potholes in that. So, I had, have a relationship with Sports Facilities, and they manage so many of these. I asked them to look at that and validate the numbers because they do that as part of their services, and they provided that at no charge. They looked at that and gave some recommendations on what they would change or modify as a courtesy. But we did look at that data that was in there and validated it, and were able to say that economically looked like it made sense.
So, go ahead, Amari.
Part of that is location as well.
Right.
Will be a big part of the feasibility. And so, until you determine the cost of the location or the building, that's when you'll get a full feasibility.
Okay. So, just to make sure I understand, the feasibility study was done in 2019. You have since evaluated it more recently, and you think...
Yeah. The one that was done in 2019 didn't have pro forma data on it. It wasn't saying how much revenue and expense it would project. So, we had another group come in and do that. They used a lot of good data, but there were a few things in it that felt were overestimated, in my opinion. And so, I thought they were projecting too high a revenues based on what I've seen in other markets. So, I had asked Sports Facilities to come in and look at that since they manage so many of these, and they adjusted those numbers down to be more conservative. So, that's kind of what we've done so far with the studies.
Okay. Are there other portions of the study that need to be looked at to make sure they're accurate, current, given it's six years, or...
Yes. But I think, right now, we need to determine if we would like to move forward with contracting with them before they give us hard concrete numbers of a feasibility and offering their services.
Okay. I just wanted to see where we're at with that. I mean, it occurs to me that there's a shelf life on feasibility studies, and given it was in 2019, so I'm just trying to probe and see what we need to be doing.
There was an update to that since then, Commissioner, just so you know that was updated. And then, that's the one that I asked that did have numbers in it about a year ago, but there's still some more data that needs to be done on that that was just, we asked these guys to look at it to say, is this real? What's right, what's not right? They did that, but there would still be some work that would need to be done on that to validate.
Will we be able to get access to the current version, or is that contingent upon something that I don't know about?
I will be happy to share with you what we have so far.
Okay. Thank you, Amari. So, in terms of who uses the facility, what I took from several of your comments is that during the week, it might be more local people within the county. Weekends are much heavier on travel and teams that come in from outside Genesee County. Is that true across the board at all, your...
Yeah. I mean, you're, obviously, more tourism destinations, beach locations are going to be more of a week-long, could be more of an extended stay through the week. Typically, in our Midwest locations, it's more of that two to three, three-day weekend type of impact. And then, but it goes to show that Monday through Thursday, there's also different things that can be gone in there. Boat shows, conventions, meeting space. Our goal is to fill that up and maximize the, increase the total utilization and revenue coming in there. So, it's a giant puzzle to fit that together on the operating...
Is there a ratio or an average of in-county versus out-county usage, or does it just vary across all your locations?
It varies on size and scale of county, for sure. I could pull together some data to try to give you a little bit more...
Yeah. I'm curious to know, do any of the sports complexes, and that's the term that I'll use to describe it, do any of them have, I don't know, things that are less, for less active people, or trying to figure out whether where senior citizens might fit in, older adults, people with disabilities that are local, probably, so when it's not being used by the CVB kind of stuff, that they would have access?
Yeah, absolutely. All comes down to design, budget, but we're seeing walking tracks on a raised-up mezzanine type of level in the indoor facility that's open, you know, through the week for usage for, you know, whoever wants to use it from a local standpoint. And then, ADA, all of our facilities are full ADA compliant. We run ADA programming in there. Going back to our mission to prove the health and economic vitality of the communities that we serve, we want this to be inclusive, right? Something for every type of person, no matter what demographic, they can call it their home and be proud of it.
Yeah. And Commissioner, it's a county asset. So, the way these things work, one of the questions always comes up, like, well, who owns this thing? Well, the county would own it. The county owns the asset. So, the county dictates how that thing's going to be set up. You dictate the relationship with the Sports Facilities companies, and that's an agreement, just like you guys were talking earlier about an agreement for medical services. It's the same kind of a concept. They'll come in, they run it, that's what they do. They run it based on performance, and they want to do a really, really good job like they're doing in other markets. But a lot of those questions, like you're asking about, how does it get used throughout the week, the county gets a lot of say in that because it's a county asset. So, I mean, it's how you lay it out on the front end, to your point. Do you put in a walking track? Do you not? You know, what kind of local, do you offer certain things during the week for underprivileged kids that, you know, don't have access to facilities that they can use? All those things are things that you get to kind of work through if you were to decide to do something.
And so, I assume then, if we wanted to have a more natural area in the middle or in the mix of all this, we could do something along those lines. Okay. The, I was watching the slides. The first one, I think, where you had the building, it was relatively small footprint, I think. But then, the acreage for the outside stuff, what are we talking about grand total for something along the lines of what you presented in terms of acres?
Yeah. So, total complex acreage is right, just over 60, 62.62, including indoor facility. That's a much smaller footprint, naturally.
I saw that.
Obviously, outdoor fields take up a lot more space, and then you have to have parking to serve all of the customers and users that are coming in.
To support the number of fields that you recommended?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the last question, at least for tonight, would be streams of revenue, revenue streams that you talked about. You mentioned that term, but what are some examples of what other communities who own these, how they do it?
A couple of ways. So, a couple of things. There's creative ways to do the revenues or to get the funding for these complexes outside of just a bond. I mean, bonding is obviously one of the ways you can do that. But the way that we see, and I'm going to come back to that in a second, but revenue streams that we see that really drive to make these things work, as Eric mentioned, most of these sports complexes around the country, the first couple of years until they build them up, run slightly in the red in terms of the operation. By the third to fourth year, they're starting to make money. They're starting to create revenue. But that's not enough revenue to pay for the cost to build it. So, it's enough to, it's, you're in the black and you're making money, but you're not enough to pay for what it costs to build it. The money where it comes to pay for these, to build them, what we see in most successful situations, a couple of things. One is a food and accommodations tax is usually used quite frequently. Food and beverage taxes are used. And what happens is you're driving all these additional people in, so those numbers grow significantly. And the projections we've seen on the most recent ones we've been involved in is enough money to actually pay for the cost of the complex. One of the things we're seeing, and you're probably familiar with these, are appropriation leases, where, like, you see them for courthouses and police stations and fire stations, where you go out to the secondary market, which we have partners that do this. They'll go out, get the funding for the complex. Let's just call it, throw a number out. Let's say the whole thing, if you did 60 acres and indoor and outdoor, let's just say the number's $50 million is the number. And you went out to the secondary market, let's say that $50 million you went out and you raised it for a rate slightly higher than what you might pay for your bond rate, but it's an appropriations lease, so it doesn't count against your bond capacity. And it's an appropriation lease where it's re-appropriated every year. And the revenue streams that help, so that becomes a lease payment. It's effectively a finance lease. You end up owning that facility at the end of 20 years or 30 years, and you're paying for it annually or however you want to set it up, that payment on it, using your revenue stream from the food and beverage or the accommodations tax to pay that. Does that make sense? That's how we're seeing these done, very often, and very, very easily, much more easy to get that money going. It doesn't affect the county's bonding capacity when you go that direction. And so, we have several partners that do that every day. That's all they do is work with municipalities and counties. So, that's an option to think about. Obviously, you'd want to look at the projections that we're talking about, that Eric's talking about, an economic impact, how many heads in bed start to project out what the increase would be in your revenue stream and taxes, to see if that creates enough increase to pay for it. But that's how we're seeing it done in many, many markets.
Okay.
If I may add to that, they did, the government just passed an increase where communities are allowed to, those who have CVBs, they're allowed to increase their accommodations tax from 5% to 8%. So, there's an additional 3% that can be allocated. It does require a vote of the people. Kent County has already implemented it. Kalamazoo is in the very infancy stage of polling, but they do plan, not infancy, they're wrapping up the polling to put it on the May ballot. We have opportunity to do it here in Genesee County by increasing that assessment revenue from 5 to 8%. So, you have a 3% that you can allocate to the additional funding revenues to sustain a sports complex.
And, Amari, in those cases with the accommodations tax, even though the constituents are voting for it, they're not paying for it. It's people who come in and rent hotels where they're going to see that, and that's that additional revenue stream that can also be used to pay for the complex.
That's correct.
All right. Very informative. Thank you, Amari. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Other questions from other commissioners? I do have a couple of other questions. I read, I saw a headline recently that said "A sports complex development fell apart in Romulus." First of all, do you know anything about that, why it fell apart? And secondly, what kinds of things should we be cautious about as we move forward with considering this?
I'll go ahead and talk about Romulus. I'm not familiar with it. My guess is, it was a private developer that was trying to go about getting it done. And as Gary alluded to, private development for these types of facilities is very, very challenging, and we guess that it fell through somewhere along those lines.
There's a lot of stage gates through this process. These things do not go up right away. We're here simply to be trusted advisors. Whether you decide to do it or you don't decide to do it, we understand. We're here to help. We want to come in, provide you with the data. Obviously, we want to be involved in the process, but that's an RFP process usually that has to happen. We just want to be part of it. We want to be part of that process that gets an opportunity to serve you if you decide to go down that pathway. But there's several things to be cautious about, one of which was, are there potholes in the feasibility study? Are those numbers real? Are those projections real? And the reason I wanted to bring Sports Facilities companies to you is, these are, this is a group of people that run 70-plus facilities around the country. They have those data points, and they can look at those and go, yes, this would work, or no, this wouldn't work. So, I think that's one of the things to be cautious in. I think you have to be cautious about, you know, where do you put it, right? Is it in the right location in town? How much difficulty will you have developing the piece of property that you're going to put it on? So, those are questions that you have to look through. We, as a team, we provide a lot of those services initially to you, just as advisors, to help make good and informed decisions should you decide to do that. But we'll be here to help you if you decide that. Right, Eric?
Yeah. And I think one other thing is, you need to keep the facilities as flexible as possible. I mean, over the last couple of years and where we are today, like pickleball is booming. And if you would have asked me six or seven years ago if that would happen, I would have told you no. So, having the facility be adaptable to that next change is also a thing to keep in mind and make sure we're doing.
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. We will take that under serious consideration. We just talked about it as recently as three hours ago, in fact. So, thank you for your presentation, and we'll be in contact.
Sounds good.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any old business?
No, ma'am.
All right. Let's move on to new business. Resolution 2025-1216. Approval of an amendment to contract, to a contract between Genesee County and Monday Township to provide for the change of scope in CBG-funded projects. There is no change in cost.
I'll move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have question and discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution, I move resolution 2025-1332. Approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Flint and Genesee Group in an amount not to exceed $1 million to provide for convention and visitor services. The cost of this agreement will be paid from accommodation tax collections.
I'll move.
It's been moved and supported. Any question and discussion?
I have.
Yes, Commissioner Fuellen.
Madam Chair, this may be a question for Crystal.
Okay.
It affects actually the next three resolutions.
Okay. Crystal?
Two questions.
Hi.
What, how much do we currently have in the accommodation tax fund?
I would have to check. I don't know that one off the top of my head.
Ballpark.
I want to say around $500,000 after items.
Okay. Okay, another ballpark. What do we average every year in revenue in that fund?
I would have to look.
Okay.
I can get that for you.
Just under $2 million.
Just under $2 million?
Depends on the year and what...
Sure, sure.
No.
Yeah.
Abs and flows.
Thank you.
Other questions from other commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Wayhill?
So, we've been working on this for some time. Actually, there was a small group of us, Commissioner Brown, myself, and Commissioner Kuzinau, along with staff from the county and folks from Explore Flint and Genesee that had a number of meetings late last year to try to figure out a way forward and what we wanted to do. And this won't come as a surprise, I think, to the folks that were part of that. But where I thought we had landed at the end of the year was renewing the contract as it existed, in terms of its scope, its terms, and at the same time, exploring something big that we could look at doing down the line. And that, the idea was the sports complex, which is why you saw the presentation tonight. And the contract that we have before us this evening is quite different than the current contract, which is what I thought we had agreed to extend for a year. And only more recently did I realize that we had changed the format and changed, in my view, changed the terms and the scope of it. And so, I had been telling, you know, through one-on-one conversations, when I got calls from folks from the Explore Flint and Genesee who were asking, you know, what's going on, I had told them way back in December, the plan is to stick with what we've got. It'll be month-to-month, based on the current terms and the current scope. And we're going to, parallel to that, figure out how we do something big for this community, maybe a sports complex if it's feasible, maybe not if it isn't. But where we've landed is something that is different than what I supported in December. So, I am going to be voting no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other? Commissioner Lloyd?
So, I'm concerned, honestly, because my understanding is, there's been a group that's been meeting to, with the group to kind of go through this. So, my support and my comfortability was that everybody was on the same page. It doesn't sound like that that's the case. And I know that, you know, this group here, there's been a million communications back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And I know it's taken some time to get to the contract. But if there's not synergy between what the committee who met on this, if there's not synergy amongst the group that met with them on our behalf, then I'm just curious, what are the changes you're talking about? What's different? Because that's my comfortability. That hits at my comfortability with this. So, we had a subcommittee meet on this. It's been five or six months. Now, I'm hearing that there isn't synergy. So, maybe somebody can help me out with that.
Well, I mean, I'll just, I've got the contracts in front of me, so I can tell you. And again, I was, so I've shared this with the subcommittee and was told that I am misremembering what we agreed to. So, I'll say that, that I'm not remembering it clearly. I was told that, and maybe that's the case. But what I can say is that we have... You know, the word "convention," I don't think is even in the new one, which is odd to me, given it's a CBB. And, you know, I, there's just, to me, there's a fair number of changes. So if it's the will of the full board, and I know that the chair has spent a fair amount of time on this, and I'm happy to be the lone vote against it, but I feel like, I feel like I came to a solution or a conclusion, and that there was consensus. That is how I remember it. And I'm, I'm not going to go through all the details, Del Rico, but, you know, the scope of it is on the back, and none of this is in the existing, really, almost none of it, but I guess you can, you can claim that it is, but it's quite different. And that's not, so I gave, I feel like I gave my word to the people from Explore Flint Genesee when they were asking me, where does it stand? And I was saying, same contract for a year, same pay, same amount of money, and we're going to explore options for the following year with maybe something different. So there you have it.
Other questions and concerns? Commissioner Kuzino?
I don't sit on this committee. However, I did, I did sit through all those, all those, all those, all those meetings. I don't understand where Wayhill's even coming from at this point in time. And I'll leave it at that. I won't be voting on this anyway. Whether it goes through to full committee or not, I don't know. I'll deal with it then. But in answering, through the chair, Madam, to Commissioner Fluehle, on your question to Crystal about if there's enough money, basically is what I was gathering, there is. So.
Is that it? Yes, Commissioner Fluehle?
So, just a process question, really, I guess. Has Explore Flint Genesee agreed to terms on this already? Or are you looking for us to approve it, and then they see it?
We have to approve it in committee, and then it'll go to this full board for approval. So we are looking at adopting, or not to adopt, the contract that we're offering to the Flint and Genesee Group.
Right. I guess my question is, they don't have, they don't have to sign off on it, correct? They don't have to agree to the terms? Just because we sent it to the full board, it's a contract mutually agreed about, right?
True, they don't have to sign off on it.
Okay.
But we have to approve it first, yeah.
Sure. Good. Okay.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't sit on this committee, but my question is this, then, if we don't approve this, they don't get any funds? This doesn't get approved, the contract doesn't stay the same, so there's no funds?
That would probably be correct. I don't.
Well, there's no contract, so obviously they're going to get no money. So, okay. Like I said, it's, it's there. And I do appreciate, so you know, Dr. Brown was kind enough to actually, even though I don't sit on the committee, to reach out to me and discuss what they were trying to do. And I've been a proponent of having some accountability with what we see from the $1 million we're handing out of taxpayer money. I know it comes from accommodation tax and people who don't live in the county, but it's generally their relatives or their family members maybe coming to stay. And it is their money still. It is our taxpayer dollars. So I think we're right to ask something for those dollars. I think we're right to ask for some accountability with those dollars. And I do appreciate you calling me and spending the time to talk to me about it through the process. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I did make calls to everybody on this committee and talk to everybody about this contract, so that hopefully there was full understanding. And in terms of the difference between the old contract and the new contract, the substantive change is new metrics. And the new metrics involve things outside of the soft metrics that we've talked about before, like social media impressions. So we are asking for harder metrics, which the Flint and Genesee Group, Explore Group, has already identified. They baked those into the report that we saw most recently. And so they have accommodated us with that change in terms of looking at additional metrics. And so we have also had our attorney talk with their attorney. We've looked at some things, and we have ironed out some issues that, you know, I believe everybody was in agreement with. When I talked with you one-on-one, nobody seemed to have any questions or concerns, except for the last one. So we approved, you know, an additional 14 days to give the Flint and Genesee Group notice, if in fact, there was any cause for suspension. Not that I would ever believe there would be any cause for suspension, because I think they do a great job. But we want to give them ample notice. And so that was one of the changes that we made from the last contract to this current contract. So that's, that's where we stand right now. If there aren't any more questions, yes, Commissioner Lloyd?
Well, I'll defer to it.
And just for, I guess, continuity. So we're saying that if this changes of the contract are not approved, then there is no funding for the group, for Explore, period.
Well, my understanding is that we, if we don't approve this contract tonight within committee, it will go to the full board. So this is a committee vote tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
If we vote it down in the committee, it won't make it to the full board. If we vote it down in the committee, then we don't have a contract with the Explore Group. And we'll have to seek another source for providing the services that they currently service us with, so.
Yeah, I think that's very important for the board to understand.
So, Madam Chair, just to clarify that, are we not currently under a contract that is month-to-month with Explore Flint and Genesee today?
As of today, we are, yes.
We are. And so if this were voted down in committee, and it didn't make it to the full commission, then we would remain under that unless we exercise a clause to terminate it. Is that not correct? Corporation counsel, if you'd weigh in on this.
I would ask corporate counsel, but let's go to Commissioner Kuzino.
It was my understanding that we extended it. We did the courtesy of doing that with the understanding that that committee that you, me, and Dr. Brown sat on came to a conclusion to bring a contract here.
Same contract.
This contract.
Same contract.
The contract that's before us. I disagree with you, Dale, and before I start to lose it, and before I say anything.
Well, let's go to.
Have a conversation with you afterwards.
Let's, let's ask corporate counsel if you can give us any feedback on the status in terms of whether it would cease now, or, and then go from month-to-month, or what's the status?
What I don't know is I, excuse me, what I don't know is I sit here today is, how was this determined to be a month-to-month extension? Was there a resolution that said, we're going to, we're going to do this month-to-month for six months? And obviously, you know, we very recently reviewed and approved the language of this contract, but I, I can't tell you the last time we would have seen the old contract. So I think at this point, there are a couple of things we would need. We would need to look at the old contract and see what that language provides, and determine, you know, how that was extended. Was there a resolution of the board that extended a certain period, or left it open-ended? And so without that information, it's not, I can't really give you a concrete answer to that, to that question.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Lloyd?
Oh, I'll defer to Commissioner.
I just wanted to expand on what I said earlier. To my knowledge, Mr. Counselor, there was no resolution. It was just something we did informally as a committee of three to just temporarily extend that while we came to a conclusion for a contract. And so as far as I'm concerned, but you're going to have to look at it, Ben, is that there is no contract. There was no resolution by this full board to do a temporary month-to-month type thing. And I don't know if that's into the old contract that you're going to look at or not. I don't, to my knowledge, that's not there, but I could be wrong.
Commissioner Lloyd was first, and then Commissioner Wayhill.
I'll defer to Commissioner Wayhill.
I'm going to make this easy and vote for this this evening, so we can get it to the full commission. And then the chips will fall where they may. And, you know, I've already said what I have to say, and I don't think I'll say it again next week. But I do want to allow the full commission to vote on this. So I'll vote for it tonight.
Commissioner Lloyd?
So, so I have a lot of, you know, thoughts about this. I appreciate the full committee and the work that's been done. I know it's been a lot of meetings, and same with the CBB. And I came in prepared to support this tonight. And I almost support the Senate to the full, full board. My concern is that, first, I think this has gone on too long. It's been six months. I expressed that to members of our body. I expressed it to Christina from the, from the group as well. And now I'm kicking myself, because I feel like I should have come in a lot earlier. I know this was a discussion before I became chair, and so I just kind of, with respect to the group, who I'm sure did a great job, I didn't want to insert. But it's been so much discussion about this, and I'm frustrated tonight for this reason, is because I thought that the subcommittee that was engaging on behalf of the board was on the same page. And I have high stock in everybody who's a part of that, Dr. Brown, Kuzino, everybody that's engaged, certainly Dale Wayhill. And if either one of you tell me that your perspective is whatever it is, I have no reason not to believe it, because I had that much confidence in all three. So tonight, you're saying, Commissioner, that your perspective is different. You don't remember doing that, which says there's been a breakdown somewhere. And we don't need to get upset and angry, it just, there's a breakdown somewhere. And, and what kind of exacerbates that is all of the back and forth with these folks as it relates to this. So I, you know, I just think we could have kind of, you know, it's a learning piece for all of us. You know, as it relates to the contract itself, I'm all for additional accountability and so on and so forth. But I have to say this. Josh and I have had some conversation as well. I think where there's a perspective, where there's been a lack of transparency, or not transparency, but a lack of accountability, I think that falls with the board of commissioners. This is why. Because each year, they've come and given us a presentation. I've been here for the last two years, and we've received a presentation that's been minimal, questions about the work that they've been doing. We have not made suggestions as a body in that setting about what we think they should be doing. I'm all for us doing things different, and I think they can do some things different to better service, but it's our responsibility to tell them that. And so now, you know, there's some other pieces I won't get into that's now, you know, playing into this. It just makes me very uncomfortable, and I think it hits at the core integrity of how we should be doing business with people who are a partner with the commission. So I'll leave that there. Specific to this contract, just a couple of things I want to raise as a question. So right now, we're in April, and this is supposed to be a year contract. And right now, if we approve it in our next meeting, it's a nine-month contract. So me personally, I like to see the contract reflect one full year, as I also committed, based on what was being shared with me from the committee. I'm just seeing that, so that's the reason why I'm raising it. So I like for that to be an amendment to this contract, so that it's a year. The other thing that this contract speaks to is that there are annual reports that they give us based on the new metrics and the other things that they've been asked to do. I don't have a problem with us changing our scope and asking them to do more. That's our prerogative as a board. You guys have done a good job having that conversation. But the annual reports are February, June, and October. So if we approve this based on the current duration, then we get a report in June and October. But the contract's done in December, and I don't think it's fair if we're adding on to what they're doing for us not to give them at least the year that we said we were going to give them, and I heard that, so I heard a year, to make the adjustments and changes, because I'm not suspecting it's going to be perfect in a year. The other thing I want to raise is, in Section 5 of this contract, and this is not a biggie, it's very, very clear that we have a designated contract administrator for this contract. I understand that. I don't need to say who it is, it's in the contract. But I just want to make clear with any vendor, and certainly in this case, that, that this vendor, as they've historically done, they're able to communicate and send communications to this full board, not just to the contract administrator, and then they send it to us. And so I want to be clear on that. So I'll digress. The major change I'd like to see is to amend the term of this contract so that it doesn't end in December. That's a nine-month agreement, that we take it through to April, whatever the date is going to be, so that it is, in fact, one full-year agreement. And then final statement I'll make is this. I do not want the engagement back and forth on this contract with this vendor to be a precursor to doing anything. If, if there's something else that we want to do in collaboration and partnership, or if there's something else we want to do, which is our prerogative, I want that to be done on its own merit, its own discussion, its own prerogative. We've had a longstanding relationship with this group. I think they should be accountable to us. I like that there's suspension language in the contract. I like that there's termination language, because just like any vendor, if they don't meet our expectations, we have another alternative. But I'm just, just a little, just a little kind of down about where we are after six months of back and forth discussion. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Fluehle.
Just to clarify my question from earlier, throughout this whole process, your subcommittee was engaged with Ms. Stewart and her group to put this agreement together, correct?
Yes, we had continuous engagement.
Thank you.
And we have, yes, it's been continuous communication.
That's what I was.
And we do anticipate additional communication, continuous communication. Yes, Commissioner Kuzino?
Even though I won't, I'm not on this committee, but I was on the subcommittee, I do recommend that this subcommittee, or this committee pass this resolution to put it to the full board.
Okay. Commissioner Lloyd?
So I'm making a substitute motion to amend this, to amend this contract to, so that it reflects a one-full-year agreement as was committed. This was, what was expressed to me. I know the other commissioners, I see people shaking their heads. That's been communicated back and forth, and I think we need to operate in integrity on that. And so my motion is to amend the agreement to reflect one full year, one full calendar year. So that's through, if we approve it on the 23rd, which I think is our next meeting, then I think it should be reflected appropriately.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to change it to a full year, extending from today's date through the end of April, I believe, of 2026. The end of the month. Okay? Question and discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to move this resolution to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to move that resolution to the full board. Question and discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. So now we are on Resolution 2025-1390. I move approval of a funding request by the Midwest Invitational Rodeo in an amount not to exceed $15,000 to provide support for the upcoming rodeo at Genesee County, Genesee County's E.L. Cummings Center. The cost of this request will be paid from Genesee County's Accommodation Tax Fund. Is there a support?
Madam Chair, I'm going to move it with a couple comments and questions.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion?
So my concern is that each year that this event, the last couple of years that this event has been done, it's been promoted as, and it's being promoted now, as a City of Flint event, put on by the mayor of the City of Flint. You can check online, there are lives, Facebook lives done by the City of Flint and the mayor. There are other promotional items, and nothing I've seen, nothing I've heard has ever reflected, or has not reflected, that this is a partnership and collaboration with the Genesee County. The other thing I want to mention is that, as we all know and we see, that the mayor has announced that he's running for a third term in office. has announced that he's running for a third term in office. That's fine. But the mentioning of the rodeo has been mentioned and celebrated in collaborations with other political discussions as well. You can go pull it up and see it yourself. So, my concern is us supporting this initiative or supporting this event when it's not being promoted as a partner event with the Genesee County, but being promoted as an event that's being put on and spearheaded by the mayor of the City of Flint. I'm not, you know, this isn't an anti-mayor comment, it's an anti-us supporting something that's being promoted and used by somebody else. And so, I moved it for discussion, but I just want to know what, who's, where's the county represented here, and what are we doing with this?
Madam Chair, I can speak to that. This will be the second year that we've supported this project with accommodation fund taxes. Last year, there was signage on the grounds of the rodeo that indicated that Genesee County was supporting that. They actually put some of the signage up on a pole, and it broke one of the light poles out there, so they had to re-put it up. So, I know that there was signage indicating that Genesee County was supporting this financially at the fairgrounds last year. This year, as part of the contract, we did write that in specifically in the contract to ensure that any advertising that Midwest Invitational Rodeo is doing has to include the county logo and the fact that it's being supported with funds from Genesee County. So, that is an actual clause right in the contract, and that would be the same for the next resolution as well.
Thank you. So, when is that advertisement going out? Because right now, you know, just as with the, and I voted my conscience, which I think was the right vote, I've gotten calls, multiple calls, many calls from my constituents about the recycling project. Same thing, being promoted, the city did it, the city did it. That's why I asked some of the questions I did in our last meeting, but I voted for it because it was the right thing to do. My votes aren't based on politics. It was the right thing to do, and the city's promoting it as something the mayor is going out, he's championing and secure. This one I have an issue with. He's doing videos with cowboy hats on and et cetera, et cetera, saying he's putting this on for residents. So, what is the benefit to us as a county to support this? How does this go in terms of supporting our priorities and our goals as a county?
Sure. So, we don't have a contract with anybody yet, so I don't know that we could mandate them to advertise in any particular way yet until you guys approve a contract with them, and then we actually provide funding to them after that fact, after the fact, and they've signed that contract that includes that requirement, that they have to acknowledge Genesee County's involvement in it. Then we can move forward and try to enforce those things that you've been talking about. And really, that's why that's in the contract, because I know that's something that you've been adamant about with your time here at the county. In terms of what is the benefit to Genesee County, these dollars are specifically designated to attract tourism, to attract people into Genesee County. Last year, they had, I believe it was almost 5,000 people over the weekend coming into Genesee County and coming into Genesee County parks, and that has a certain economic benefit for Genesee County, right? They've got agreements with two different hotels where they're housing their staff. All of these kind of, I don't want to call them actors, they're not actors, performers, rodeo performers are staying in the county and staying at our local hotels, and, you know, that drives an economic impact as well.
So, just a closing comment. I appreciate the perspective you shared. You've articulated that there's a benefit to Genesee County.
Yes.
I'll be supporting this because my votes are not based on politics, but I'm going to raise the relevant questions. But what I will say is that, as a county, with our communication person, when we're supporting various events and so on and so forth, I just want to see us continue to do more because it's amping up, right? I want to give kudos. But to really be on top of making sure Genesee County is equally represented when it comes to advertisements, communications of what we're a part of, and we make sure that the residents across this county don't mistake in our contributions as being connected to an individual or campaigns or whatever the case may be, but see it as us doing it as a commission, as a governmental entity, because we believe it benefits the county at large. So, I moved it. I plan to support it because, based on what you said, I believe it's the right thing for Genesee County, but I hope my comments are very well noted.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the whole board, I don't sit on this committee again, but my question is, with all of these that come in front of us, what is our measuring stick, or what is our barometer for measurement of whether we fund these or not? To me, they seem very political on a lot of these we do, in the areas we've done them. So, that's why I'm questioning several of these, because you and I had a conversation about a golf outing, and you said it doesn't fill up enough beds. But, you know, I'm going to say the same amount of people are going to come to town as what Josh just said with this, to view one of these events, and it's not. So, I'm just trying to understand, what is our measuring stick for whether we support these or not? Because there's tons of events that go on in Genesee County. They could say they bring people in, and they fill up beds and hotels and all this. We need to put a policy in place on who we're, or what we're going to approve, why we're approving it, and it's something that I would encourage either this board or maybe the Government Operations Committee to come up with, on how and why we're approving these, and what is the benefit? Does it meet this threshold? Because if not, you know, we've all agree, we don't want to see politics in these things, and it always does come in, and I'm not naive enough to say that that's not a reality. But what makes this or the Flint City Bucks event more valuable to the county than other events? And that's where my question is, you guys can approve this, whatever's going to come to the board next week, but I would like to start thinking of that, since we do have a larger amount of accommodation tax, we do have ideas of what we want to spend it with, we just spent a few hours discussing on different ideas of how to grow and create economic development throughout the county, but we should have, and Commissioner Wayhill is always big on this, a policy on how we administrate these funds. And from right now, it just seems like, guess what? Somebody's got this they like, somebody's got that they like, and we do it, but there's no, this is the return on our investment. And, you know, I've always said this with these other contracts we approve with people, they say they do this, but we have no measuring stick to prove whether our tax dollars are being used wisely. And this is one that I think we could put something in place. We could work with the Convention and Visitors Bureau on this to kind of come up with some idea of how to measure this, since we have a contract with them for a year, it seems like we're going to pass it next week. I'd just like to see something put in place to guarantee that, guess what? Events that really would benefit the county are on the agenda, and those that maybe benefit someone's political career are not.
Commissioner Flouellen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, that's why I asked my question earlier, how much is in the fund, how much we gather, you know, generate each year. I mean, this is $30,000 out of a $500,000 balance with no metric as to what we approve, and I agree with Commissioner Lloyd. I followed this, the whole rodeo story last year. I had no idea it was a county function, right? Good, bad, or indifferent. There was nothing that said Genesee County about any of it. The only advertisement on it was from the mayor. And so, that's why, and I mean, the return on investment, what type of impact do we have for this $15,000? 5,000 people, sounds like a lot, but is there other events going on throughout the year that could bring in more people and generate more accommodation tax? And, yes, to the point of, we should not tie anything to the politics of the region. It's fine. And the next one, a soccer game, international soccer game? Is, are these the best choices for our investment of our money to bring in that revenue that we want to boost?
Commissioner Kuzno.
This, you know, to Commissioner Flouellen and Gatzinger, this is something that we talked about last year, too. And we, I agree with Commissioner Shoemaker, we have no idea. We really don't. We've just haphazardly been using some of this money and still maintaining a large fund balance, but, you know, we just had a priority meeting. I would suggest we put that as one of our priorities ASAP. How better utilize this money and set up some type of metrics or whatever? But maybe that's a suggestion we should do for our priorities.
Commissioner Flouellen.
One more question, if I may, so this accommodation tax fund, this isn't, I mean, this is a revolving fund, right? It can build. And so, if we're looking at these bigger projects down the road, perhaps a sports complex, some other type of program, we don't have to spend this money every year unless there's benefit to it.
That's true.
This is money that can go towards a larger project, a larger program, like a sports facility. Thank you.
So, Amari, can you come up for one more time, please?
I don't like it at all.
Since we've been meeting over the last few months, do you want to tell them about the ROI report that we've been working on, you've been working on?
Yes. So, we use a system called Estimated Economic Impact Calculator. And the benchmarks that we have set for Genesee County is those events that have over 100 room nights or over 1,000 attendees that travel from outside of Genesee County. They typically sustain an economic impact of about $300,000 or more per events that are, meet those thresholds. So, for something like the Midwest Invitational Rodeo, they have secured, yes, so we worked, they actually sent us the IRFP to send to the hotels to secure the room nights in the group blocks. They have secured over, I want to say, 150 room nights, so 60 room nights per night, and then there's like a peak room night of 30 nights for their staff. They will also be staying at Wolverine Campground as well, so they're inviting a lot of RVs to come into our campground areas as well. Yes, they did service over 5,000 attendees. We noticed that that was a 400% increase in visitors to the EA Cummings Center versus this time last year. So, bringing a new event to the community, so that was a new event we were able to secure in Genesee County that will continue to grow and sustain revenues. So, we do have a threshold. It's 100 room nights or 1,000 attendees that reaches an estimate of at least $300,000 in economic impact in the county.
And so, that is one of the metrics that we were talking about, that we have baked into the contract, so we know which things are making an impact and which things are not. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that ROI reporting, and it did have a couple of little tweaks, I think, you needed to make in it. And so, we're in a pilot phase right now of looking at that report, and then moving forward, that's going to be part of our accountability stick. Commissioner Wayhill.
Madam Chair, I appreciate that information. So, is it my understanding that this agreement is with Midwest Invitational, and then the other, the second one is with Flint Premier Soccer, but that Flint, Explore Flint and Genesee is doing the metrics separately and will supply us with those?
Well, yes. So, anytime we receive an IRFP for room nights, we do the metrics on large events like that. I am not sure who submitted the funding request to Midwest Invitational Rodeo. I do not believe it came from Nicole Scott, which is the CEO of it, so I'm not sure if it's going to the city to pay for, to Nicole Scott. But yes, we receive from the, I received from the event organizer an IRFP of how many rooms. Same thing for Costa with Flint City Bucks. He settles a contract with the hotels, and through room pickup is how we're able to evaluate assessment.
Okay. Because I noted that in both of these agreements, there's no requirement that the entity that we are contracting with provide the metrics or the data, but it sounds like you'll satisfy me if it's, we're going to get it through you all. Is that right?
If you require them to, I can provide them with that information, yes.
Okay. Because there's nothing in either of these agreements that says they have to provide metrics or data.
Typically, anyone who comes to the commissioners' board has already asked me for data to support their funding request. So, we would evaluate it at that time and then send them to you.
What we might want to do going forward to Commissioner Kuzno and others is build in an additional number on these contracts that speaks to economic impact and return on investment. Maybe just a general statement. I don't know how specific we can get, but we certainly want them to report not only on what we request here with the expenditures, but also on the ROI. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Lloyd?
I would defer to.
And just, because I want to piggyback off Commissioner Lloyd, so just for clarity, because I'm asked this as well, the $15,000 for the Midwest is appropriation tax dollars not paid by the city?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The $15,000 that's been allotted for the Midwest Invitational?
This is a contract with Midwest Invitational.
And these funds are from where? The $15,000?
From the accommodation tax.
Okay. Not the city paid for it. Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Didn't realize you were getting, got questions about this, too, but thank you for saying.
Oh, I get everything.
Yeah. So, I want to make a substitute amendment to amend this contract in Section 6. I know we may not do it custom on the floor, but we're able to do it. Section 6 of this contract says, "The rodeo agree to promptly display the Genesee County logos and all of its advertisements concerning the rodeo, including the language funded in partnership with Genesee County." I'd like to see that language, this contract amended to say funded by vote of the Genesee County Commission. And that aligns with a conversation that we've had many times. People hear Genesee County, but they never associate the elected officials, thus so many don't even know who we are. And I'd like to see us, you know, continue that theme. I don't know if I got to bring a policy for the board to debate it and vote on it, that we start using like language, like at senior centers and other places, so that people are clear that it's by the vote of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners.
So, that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Will you restate it, Commissioner Lloyd, just so I hear?
So, it says funded in partnership with Genesee County. I'd like to amend the contract to say funded by vote of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners. So, it's saying it was funded by way of our vote.
Understood. I'll support that. I assume you're going to add that to the next one as well?
Yes.
All right. I'll support it.
It's been moved and seconded, question and discussion. Question for Amari, do you happen to know the total budget of this event?
Yes. The budget for the Midwest Invitational Rodeo is about $300,000. That's based on the numbers that I received from the CEO.
So, our share of it is 15,000?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Gatzinger.
They solicit funding from other partners throughout the community. They've got partnership through some national, like USDA, some branding initiatives as well. Our, a portion of the budget that is allocated to Explore Flint and Genesee, so we actually paid for the signage that Josh referred to with being the largest county park system in the state of Michigan, along with every single banner that was displayed inside of the rodeo as well.
Okay. Other questions? Discussion? Commissioner Lloyd?
I'm finding a comment. And then, I think we need to have somebody go out to these events and make sure this one, and the next one, other, other ones we have? Well, to make sure, like, somebody from the county, that is, like, to make sure these folks that we're partnering with year over year, that they're actually advertising, you know, making sure that they have our signage and the stuff that we see in the contract.
Other comments? Questions? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I move the resolution, the base resolution for, to the full board. 1390, I move it to the full board.
Is there a second?
Court.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, Resolution 2025-1391 was the approval of the next request. I'd like to make a motion to amend the relevant language to include that the advertisements concerning the event will include language funded by vote of Genesee County Board of Commissioners.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Questions? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I move Resolution 1391, last four numbers.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any other business before this committee? We are adjourned at 7:16. We are adjourned at 7:16.
Well, man, you got it through.
Commissioner Kuzno?
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger?
Here.
Sure. Commissioner Wayhill?
I'm here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd? Commissioner Lloyd?
Present. I need approval of the minutes from March 19, 2025. Anybody have any questions or changes? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We now take time for public comment to the committee. If anybody has a desire to make a comment to the committee, please step up to the podium. Is there anybody that wishes to address the committee? Third and final time, is there anybody that wishes to address the committee? Seeing none, we move on. We don't have any communications, no old business that I'm aware of. New business, Resolution 25-1326, forwarding to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the week's ending 3/9/25, 3/16/25, in the total amount of $14,839,879.54.
Move it.
Support.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-1368, approval of a grant award to Region 3 State Homeland Security Program in amount not to exceed $54,450 to provide for the purchase of the, of an underwater rover. This will be paid from account following.
Move it. Support.
Okay, well, I have just a question from, I think the under sheriff is here. Well, whoever's going to take care of it, step up to the podium. Tell me, tell me what you're doing.
Captain Cronkirk from the Sheriff's Office, I run the paramedic division.
Yeah, what is this, you know, why, is this just something that Homeland Security is doing to, for all sheriff departments? Or is this something that you initiated?
There's a process you go through, I said on that board, there's funds allocated to certain projects. This project started in 2022, where we decided to try to get this rover. It was just finally sent through. This is $20,22 we're spending, so. It's been a long process.
I was wondering, you know, because I hadn't heard anything about it.
We've gotten several things from them, mostly for our dive team. We got suits one year, we got the hummingbird sonar through this program. And now we're going to try to get this underwater drone for the...
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Shoemaker?
To the chair. Could you explain what this device actually does?
What's that?
Can you explain what the device actually does?
So it's an underwater drone, basically an underwater robot. It has a thousand-foot tether. It can go in any depth of water. It's tethered right to the boat, so it's unlimited time underwater. So we would drive around on a drowning victim and we would mark spots in the past, and then a diver would have to go down and check those spots. Well, now we can identify a spot, throw the rover in the water, send it down. It identifies it. If it's a small object, up to about a 10-year-old, it can grab it and bring it to the top. If it's not, it grabs a hold of it and the diver goes down and brings up the person.
You'll use this in conjunction with the device that you pull behind the boat, like that has a sonar to find the?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's all used in conjunction.
Does anybody else have any?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think when I spoke to the sheriff about this piece of equipment, is a shared piece of equipment with other counties?
So it, being part of that Homeland Security Grant, it has to have a nexus to a multi-jurisdictional. So us being part of the Southeast Dive Team opens up that nexus for the multi-jurisdictional.
And we're, but we're going to be the ones to house the equipment?
Correct. It'll stay here in Genesee County, and if they need it, they could call us and we would come and...
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-1376, approval of a fiscal year 2024 deficit elimination plan and directing the Department of Fiscal Services to submit the plan to the state of Michigan. I need a motion now. Support. Crystal, could you step up and explain this?
We received a notice from the state of Michigan saying that we had to file a deficit elimination plan for two funds. One of them is the motor pool fund, as part of the budget process for fiscal year 2025. You may recall, we amended those rates when we approved the budget. So overall, the cost of vehicles have gone up, and so has the add-ons and the upfitting. So we did adjust our rates to charge those user departments to cover those higher costs. So we do anticipate it will correct itself by the end of fiscal year '26. It just wasn't in place for fiscal year '24. The second fund is the 2018 Capital Improvement Bond Fund. The only reason that's in a deficit is because the bond payments due, the interest payments due on October 1st. We never want to be moving money the day that a bond payments due. So we move it in September for that October payment. So that should also correct itself in 2026.
Anybody have any questions of Crystal? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Crystal. 25-1380, approval of a request to create post and fill one secretary position at Genesee County's Public Defender's Office. This position is grant-funded.
Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-1381, approval of a request to create post and fill four interim positions at Genesee County's Public Defender's Office. Once again, this is fully grant-funded.
Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-1402, approval of a proposed budget amendment to the 2425 Appropriations Resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-1434, approval of a request to dispose of a capital asset over $30,000. Patrick, are you out there? I need a motion and a support.
Move it.
Support.
Okay, Patrick. Okay, can you explain what this asset is and et cetera, the things we talked about yesterday?
Yeah. So this is the Genesee Bell paddle wheel boat that is located at Crossroads Village. After, or during COVID, the boat went dormant. Just after COVID, it was used as a, as a bar for a little bit, until we were told that the boat needs to be moving in order for that liquor license to be available. When we look at the history of the Bell over the past few years, one of the important things is, is we are due now for our dry dock inspection. Last time we had a dry dock inspection, the, between the dry dock inspection and the repairs, that was $115,000 that we were on the hook for. So that was back in 2017. Our revenue for the year was just slight of $40,000. So we subsidized the boat in 2017 by $134,000. We subsidized the boat by $39,000 in 2018, and we subsidized it by $33,000 in 2019.
And in order to dry dock it, what do you have to do? I mean, I know the answer, but go ahead.
You have to get two cranes in to pull it out of the water. It gets put on crimming, and then the state comes in and does an inspection. Usually when we do the dry dock inspection, that's when we're doing painting, any sort of repair and that that needs to be done to the boat.
Is that also needed for a survey for the insurance, too?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions or comments of Patrick? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion? Anybody's vote no? Seeing none. I'm confused now. It's passed.
Thank you.
We don't have any other business, and we adjourn at 7... 27.
Twenty-seven.
Wait to call this until the Corporation Council returns, so just give us a minute if you would. We have our legal counsel, so we're going to call Governmental Operations to Order at 7:31. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Flueeling?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
All right, we have, thank you for that. We have the approval of the minutes for March 19th, 2025. What's your pleasure?
Moved, supported.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Do we have any public comment? Any public comment to Governmental Operations? Last call for public comment. Public comment is closed. Under Communications, we have two items. The first is 25-149 Circuit Court Presentation. Will those folks please step forward, introduce yourselves by name and title if you would? I see that.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Bree Benham. I am the Specialty Court Services Director for Genesee County.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Lachana, Circuit Court Judge here in Genesee County.
All right, welcome.
All right, so we just wanted to come to you guys. Specialty Courts, we run at about a budget of a million dollars a year that we're fully grant-funded. We have a couple of federal funding sources, but majority of it is grants from the State Court Administrative Office. As most of you are probably aware, the climate of federal grant funding right now is pretty uncertain. So we're running at max capacity with the funding we currently have, and we're seeing a lot of trends in our specialty courts right now with new and emerging drugs in our community. So right now, we're doing pretty baseline drug testing with our clients, which it works, but we really need to expand. So we're here requesting some $50,000, to be exact, from the Marijuana Tax Dollar Fund from last year. So we just wanted to tell you a little bit more about what we do, why it's important for you guys as Commissioners, and why we feel that you should support this.
There it is.
So in Genesee County, we have four different specialty courts that run in our Circuit Court. We have Adult Felony Recovery Court. Judge Lachana presides over that one. That one has by far the highest capacity. We have 100 people that can be in that program at any given time. Mental Health Court has a capacity of 75. Veterans Treatment Court has a capacity of 30, as well as our Family Dependency Treatment Court, which is child abuse and neglect cases, and that has a capacity of 25. So our goal as a specialty court program as a whole is to address root causes of addiction and mental health issues for our clients that we serve, and ultimately reduce recidivism and increase public safety for our community, as that's a huge cost overall for our county. So why do specialty courts matter? Why does it matter for you guys to support what we do? Looking at our stats, we were, specialty courts as a whole reduced the rearrest rates by up to 45%. That's in any given year. So right now, looking at our Recovery Court, which is our largest program, our recidivism rate, looking post 12 months of graduation, is only 14%. And the Michigan State rate, actually this was updated since I made this presentation, it's currently at 26.6%. So we're right about 50% of that. Looking at a 24-month outlook, that recidivism rate goes up by about 4%, so it's not much, which is pretty significant compared to the Michigan State rates. For every $3 that we, or I'm sorry, for every dollar that we put into the specialty courts, our community sees $3 to $6 back in investment. So our Recovery Court overall saved about $3 million last year. That's looking at jail time for all of our clients. We served, I think, 152 last year in our Recovery Court program. Not all of them are successful, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we saved a ton of jail time, bed days in jail. We also don't ask the clients to spend any money, so again, we're fully grant-funded. We fund their treatment, we fund their drug testing, we fund every single part of the program to make them successful, to not recidivate and end up back in jail. Overall, we saved 52,480 jail days just in 2024, which equates to that about $3 million. I do have packets for all of you after, that just shows some of our stats over the last year, so that you guys can see. As I said, our federal funding climate right now is very uncertain. So currently, we have a $2 million grant from SAMSA. That's $400,000 a year for five years. Our guidance right now is, we don't know if we will have that come October 1st. So that funds a huge portion of our Recovery Court and Veterans Treatment Court, and that would be a really significant impact on what we're able to do with our clients. As I said, right now, we're funding all of their treatment, drug testing. The only thing they pay is an initial $600 Recovery Court fee, and that's simply because we want them to have some sort of investment in the process, since we're putting so much money into them. So without that money, we don't feel that we could do the caliber of treatment and services that we need to do. And obviously, we can't predict what's going to happen in the future. So we could find out on September 30th of this year that we're not going to have that $400,000 come October 1st. So why we're here today and why we're asking for that $50,000, like I said, is because we have really limited drug testing options. So we're seeing a lot of Xylazine, which is a veterinary drug. It actually causes deterioration in skin. People are injecting it. And then ketamine is a really big one. Mushrooms are also very, very prevalent right now, and we're unable to test for that currently. So we're missing a huge portion of drugs of abuse in all of our programs. There's also gaps in monitoring, which significantly jeopardize what we can do as a program. We're not successful if we're not able to appropriately monitor our clients. They're going to go right back out, use, and recidivate.
No, I mean, let me just give a little flavor to the Recovery Court Program. Bree's the numbers person. I went to law school because I can't do numbers, and I don't like them. But I like dealing with people, and I've done Recovery Court now from the time I first became a District Court Judge. I sat as a Circuit Court Judge in that role from 2011 until today, and I can say that it is, without a doubt, the most rewarding part of what we do in the court system. And in Genesee County, we have, as Bree mentioned, the number of programs that we have is, around the state, significant. A lot of counties may have one specialty court or another. Not very many counties have what we have. And to operate these programs without any cost to the county is, quite frankly, amazing, especially when you count the amount of money that we save in jail bed days. And it's impossible to measure the amount of money we save in terms of recidivism and people coming back to the court system. I mean, our goal is to one and done. We don't want to see somebody again, especially in the court system. But I want to extend an invitation to all of you to come on a Thursday afternoon to the Circuit Court at 2 o'clock and watch our program work. And you're going to see some people that are doing amazing things and succeeding incredibly well, and you're going to see some people that are struggling. And that's what the real world of addiction looks like. And you're going to see some people succeed and graduate. I think in the last month, we've had probably seven or eight graduations in the Recovery Court Program alone. And these are people that are coming to us homeless, destitute, cut off from their families, and charged with felonies, and they're leaving 12, 14, 16 months later with jobs, productive members of the community, and ready to go out and do recovery for the long term. And that's where the recidivism numbers really are reflected. And so I encourage any one of you on any given Thursday, come down there and watch and see what we do. You can contact my office or the Recovery Court Office. Let us know you're coming, and we'd be happy to sort of give you a hands-on approach to what this is. But it truly is a remarkable program, and as Bree mentioned, the uncertainty of the funding in the future is obviously concerning to us. But with this small amount of money, I think we can fill some of the gaps we currently have and really keep our folks accountable, because accountability and honesty in recovery is what works. We've learned that from the time this program existed before I was there. It'll be the same way when I'm done. And that's to say that if you're honest with yourself and with those that are monitoring you, you're going to have a better shot at recovery. And the more we can do to keep people honest, the more success we're going to have. So happy to answer any questions for you folks, but I think we're a bargain for the county. I've sat here and listened tonight to all the money that is requested and asked for, and we don't cost you a dollar. We are, I think, a crown jewel of the court system, so to speak, and this money is obviously not from the General Fund, but from the Marijuana Tax Dollars. And I think to put that money back into something that is as productive as we are would be a significant move.
Judge Lachana, Director Benham, thank you. Can you restate, if you haven't, or if you have already, but I don't know that you have, what your request is? Dollar amount? And after you say that, my request to you would be to send over a resolution so that we can act on it officially. So if you would state what you're asking us, and then we'll have questions if Commissioners want.
Yeah, so we just wanted to come to you guys to gauge interest in if this was something that you guys would even fund out of that Marijuana Tax Dollar money. We're requesting overall $50,000 for the next year. Essentially, what that would fund is new drug testing cups for us. Those are $20 each. And those include non-traditional drugs that we don't test for currently. Like I said, the psilocybin, ketamine, xylazine, fentanyl. We do test for fentanyl currently, but that's also on there, just to ensure that we're catching everything and that we're giving all of our clients the services that they need to get a well-rounded recovery. This is just a one-time funding that we're asking for. We're not asking for that to be renewed past that point. We just wanted to kind of tell you guys about what we do and see if that was even something that was doable.
I'll open it to Commissioners that are on the committee first to comment or ask questions. Commissioner Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation and bringing forth the opportunity for us to partner in support of your efforts. I think the work you're doing is great, and I look forward to a future opportunity of supporting your request.
Do we have additional discussion? Or questions for our presenters? None tonight. Okay, please send us a resolution, and I assume you know the process for that, and we'll look forward to receiving it.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Director. We have a second communications item, 25-224, update on employee health insurance. Our Director of Human Resources, hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the request came in to maybe walk through where our healthcare insurance rates, open enrollment just ended and wrapped up, and we saw an increase in rates this year, which we don't always see. So we put, I put together a short presentation, and I'll open to any questions as we go. So this year's rates were affected, there were three significant factors that impacted our health insurance rates. Increased costs overall, new medications and their expanded uses, and then Public Act 152, and under that Public Act, the selection of the hard cap. We're going to, I'm going to briefly cover each of those items. First, costs. Things cost more. We know that. Who doesn't know the cost of eggs lately? We've all talked about the cost of eggs. If you've tried to fly somewhere, you've bought a vehicle, everything costs more. We know that. We came out of COVID. We haven't completely recovered from that. I don't think that we ever will. In those increased costs included healthcare costs, services, supplies. It was no different than any other purchases that we make. We were seeing healthcare trends. The costs of our trends were high throughout the year. The other impact was that new medication. We've all heard about the GLP-1s. They were first identified to help people with diabetes, and then somehow, we discovered it helps with weight loss. But then it's expanding further. They're looking at cardiac issues, Parkinson's Disease, Alzheimer's. The list, I feel, is going to continue to grow. The problem with that is this is a new drug, so it is still under no generic rules. So we can't get them cheap. They basically can set the price for the medications. There's several out there. They'll run anywhere from $1,100 to $1,300 a month. We have maybe 200 prescriptions out there, running in a nine-month period, I looked at, and I think it was costing $1 million in a nine-month period for just that one medication alone. And generally, we won't see generics for new drugs for 10 years. That was a huge driving cost. Everybody's heard about them. It's a miracle drug. We all want to use it if we have a condition they think that's going to help it. But we were watching that throughout the year as well, because we knew that was a costly item to our healthcare. The third piece of the driver for our cost was PA 152. It's a Michigan Public Act back from 2011. It's called the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act. The Act itself sets limits on what a public employer can pay towards a medical plan for their employees. Genesee County, when the Act was coming out, we were actually in the process of negotiations with our union contracts, and we negotiated to have the hard cap established here at Genesee County. We also have language in our contracts that if PA 152 goes away for some reason, then the employee contribution rate is 20%. Some of you may have heard of PA 152 when it was coming out. Employees and others were calling it the 2080 Act or the 8020 Act. We actually adopted the hard cap. So the hard cap allows us to pay up to the hard cap. The hard cap is set by the Michigan Treasury every year. So they set it in the beginning of 2011, going into 2012, and then every year, they set a percentage of what that dollar amount will increase. So every year, we're looking for that to see what that is. We're watching where our healthcare is trending to try to prepare for our rates when open enrollment occurs. This is kind of a history. It doesn't go all the way back, but it goes pretty far back. Just to give you an idea, when the Treasury sets the rate increase, three, 2% to 3% generally hasn't been an issue. We have seen some spikes in our healthcare throughout the years, since 2016-ish forward. But for the most part, it's been pretty stable. The hard cap for this year, 2025, was .2. So if you compare that to the history, that's significantly lower. There was conversations, there was attempts to change the hard cap adoption, to increase it above .2. It never came to fruition. So .2 is the increase from last year's rates that the county can cover in this year's rates. Anything over a .2 increase in healthcare costs then would be paid by us as employees. That's our contribution amount. Genesee County, for the last year, our healthcare rates were, we experienced an increase of 13.9%. So with the .2, that means employees are going to pick up 13.09%. The good news is, we trended lower than other public employers, and you can see that up there. It's showing anywhere from 15% to 20% trend increases. So while it's painful for our healthcare rates to go up, we actually didn't go up as high as others situated similarly to us. I know you can't see this chart here. I believe, Josh, you have the handouts for everybody, or I can get you a copy. This just goes back to 2016 up till 2025 to show you what our healthcare rates were through the year, so you can see when it does increase, when it comes back down. It's actually, if you look at 2016, Blue Cross and the HMO that, or the PPO that we have through HAP is very similar to rates we have today. So that's nine years ago, and if anybody, if any of you follow healthcare trends, the increases have been significant in the last decade. So I think we've done a pretty good job holding our rates while still providing really good, quality healthcare. What are we doing for the future? What are we doing this year? We're expecting increases again to trend because of the costs are not going down, the GLP-1s are not going down. But we have created the Healthcare Coalition. There were negotiated last contract negotiations with the union. Every union is represented, and they work throughout the year with our benefit advisors, our healthcare providers through Plant Moran, the consultants. They keep us up to date on trends, recommend ideas for us on what we can do to pivot. We don't have to wait three years for a contract to open up to try to change healthcare and try to respond to increases. We're actually looking at it every year. And I know, because we've already talked to the Coalition, one meeting about the increase, they are interested in motivating and doing some changes that still provide a really quality, meaningful healthcare, but can help contain the costs moving forward. Other good piece of news is, we do have the hard cap rate for next year, and it's 2.9%. So we're going back to something that we're more used to, and that will help absorb some of the costs. If we can't contain all of it, at least we're back to a normal hard cap increase, quote unquote, "normal."
All right, do we have any questions? From committee members first, and then others? Commissioner Lloyd.
Can you go back to the slide that had the rates, the big spreadsheet? So am I reading it right? The 2025 column is the new monthly contribution? Yes, it is.
Is $126. There's a few years it's similar, but if you look at 2016, the single plan with Blue Cross was 134, and the single plan with the HAP PPO was 116. And I look at the PPO, not the HMO, because our plan through ASR is really the broadest PPO network that you can get. It's not similar to the HMO.
Thank you. I can't, it's a gray spreadsheet. I can't really view it from here. Just the section that I can see is the three columns at the top left-hand side of the spreadsheet. And, yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, you know, you're talking to a person going for, a single person going from $37 to $126, or a family going from $101 a month to $344 a month. Even with a wage increase, it's a huge difference for somebody who's already barely getting by, making, you know, $30, $40, $50, $60,000 a year with a family, right? So multiple kids, maybe a husband, maybe even one income in the household. So that's really, really tough. I guess my question is, with the hard cap, how much of that difference, like take the family for instance, with the hard cap, how much of that difference are we paying versus what they're paying? Or is the employee paying the entire difference?
That is the employee rate. And these, it wasn't in my slides, but we've done the calculation. The employee rates, what we are paying today as employees for the 2025 rates, which will start, I guess, in May, is 16%. It's equivalent to 16%.
What we pay or they?
What will be, we all pay the same. Every employee pays the same.
I'm talking about employees, not like us.
Yeah, I'm an employee. I have our healthcare. That's what I pay. So if we had gone the 8020 route, we would have actually been paying more. The hard cap saved us in this situation, us, the employees, we're paying about 16%. But it is, it is a significant increase.
So let me ask a question. So the increase that they receive, is the increase solely because of the increase in cost? Or is there something we asked for as well that may have impacted costs? Just for clarity.
It's the increase in costs.
Okay, okay. And then just a comment. What happened with that law, I remember when it came through, we represent thousands of state workers, you know, thousands of public employees. Really, it was an erosion of the employees' collective bargaining rights, because traditionally, we were able to bargain that, right? And so when they passed that law, it was a direct, it wasn't just about cost, it was a direct attack on those rights, limiting their ability to negotiate what that, what that looks like. And that's unfortunate, because I, and I'm sure some of my colleagues, if we knew that was the increase, we may have been inclined to do something different, but the law prevents us from doing that. So it's just an unfortunate situation. I'm just remembering a young lady that came in here and spoke on public comment recently. That was, that was a tough, that was a tough one to hear, and certainly tough for her, obviously. Thank you.
Additional conversation, questions? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Anita through the chair. What do you think the total in, total cost for the county is going to be then this year increase?
Crystal actually has it. I wouldn't want to put her on the spot and assume that she knows it, but as soon as we get those, we do share them with fiscal, or they may be included in the email. Do you happen to know? Looked at it, sorry.
No, so we look at them, the first payroll that gets loaded in May. So HR doesn't import for the employer cost and the employee cost. So we run that report to start our budget for the next fiscal year, so I'll have that in a couple of weeks.
Okay, what, what percent were you saying that was going to increase then? Was there a percentage you said it was going to increase?
The overall increase for ours was 13.29%.
And we're paying what now? Annually? Do you know we're paying annually for insurance cost? Because I'm just going to add 13%.
Yeah, I can get that for you. I don't know that one off the top of my head. It's millions of dollars. But yeah, I can get that for you. Because it's spread across all of our 200 funds, so it's not like it's all in one spot, but I can easily run a report on that.
All right, thank you. If I may.
Yes, Commissioner.
Anita, I had some questions emailed in to me by employee/resident, and I'm wondering if you could just answer them real quick for me, so we can, if they're listening. If not, I'll email them back and respond from there. They want, if you could explain what VIBA is.
VIBA is, good thing Crystal's standing here too. VIBA is a fund that's set up to pay for retiree healthcare. So we make contributions. Employees like myself make contributions to it. General Fund makes contributions to it via Crystal, making transfers. And then as we have retiree healthcare bills come in, that's where it's being paid from.
And to continue on, I'm sorry, there's several here, so it's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes, of course.
Because you got the same email.
I did. I was going to say I have the same question, so have at it.
The next one, obviously, not all employees qualify for retiree healthcare, though.
Correct, since 2011.
Even though all employees are... Even though all employees are asked to contribute to VIBA?
No, only employees who are eligible for retiree healthcare pay into VIBA.
Okay. And obviously, there's different levels based on union negotiations, that different groups pay in a different amount, different percentages?
Oh, into VIBA, yes.
Okay, and that's based on union contracts that are negotiated? Okay. Next thing is, can anyone sit in on the Health Coalition meetings?
They're not public meetings. All of the unions are invited, and they elect their representative. And the Coalition meetings themselves are actually an extension of contract negotiations. So instead of negotiating it during the contract with wages and everything else, that's the avenue for it. So the same is, no, not everybody can, or anybody can sit in during contract negotiations. You can't sit in during a Coalition meeting as well. But they have union representation to speak to that person who's representing them.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Do we have other questions, discussion?
Just for Commissioner Avery. Yeah, outside the committee, okay. Just for clarity, Anita, so the employee is made, the representative from the union is to disseminate information for the increase if it were to occur? Is that how that works? Or is there no notice?
No, the representatives on the Coalition do not make the notice. HR does the announcement when it's open enrollment time. The rates are actually the last thing we get. We're trying to prepare all of the documents, get everything set up in the pay loss, and there's just a ton behind the scenes. But always the rates are last because they're trying to get every bit of data from our utilization in the last year. So getting those rates for a March open enrollment really stresses the system for them to get it to us in time. So it's not from the Coalition, it's actually from our office.
From the office, okay, okay. I was just, you know, just concerned about the processes of, there are surprises or whatever. Is there any way we could, or the HR could have it to where there's a heads up? I know it's a short window, but...
It's a really small, short window of time. I don't think that'll make people feel better, but they can, employees can engage with their representative on the Coalition. Ask them, how are things looking? What's the trend looking like? Do we know or have an idea? It's hard to really guess on what the rates will be until you get close enough to it. But getting employees engaged in our healthcare and how they use our healthcare makes a direct effect on our rates as well. So it's always good. I always encourage people to reach out and to learn.
Thank you.
Do we have additional discussion questions? I've got a couple if I could. Thank you for being here. This was, I was one of the commissioners that requested this, so I appreciate it. So just looking at this chart, the difference in family is, is sort of crushing to me. And clearly to some of our employees, including the young woman who was here in Public Comment, who, you know, looks to me like she's early in her career, and I know that she has at least one child. And this is going to be difficult for people like her. We spent so much time, I think, in attention, giving attention to the morale of county employees. And I know that Mr. Freeman, that is something that he believes passionately in. And I've heard him say it for a couple of years now. I've heard you say it, I've heard others say it. And Del Rico, or Commissioner Lloyd, mentioned the wage increases, which we're providing to everyone at some, one level or another. But this, this just undercuts it. And what, what I understand you to say is, with the hard cap, we essentially don't have the ability to address it, is that...
Correct. We've negotiated, we chose the hard cap. We actually negotiated it with our unions because it was happening at the same time. So it's in all of our union contracts, and then that's set by the Michigan Department of Treasury each year.
And can I just add something real quick?
Certainly.
I mean, we, to the extent that we're able to, we did try to address that by offering other plans, right? We've got our, our base plan, which is the, the second group of numbers down, the second grouping of numbers, which the deductibles are a little bit different, but the initial out-of-pocket cost for employees is much lower. But, you know, at the end of the day, if you, if you use your insurance, you're still gonna, you're still going to be burdened with that cost. But we try to, try to give them an opportunity not to be hit every single pay period. So to the extent, like, we didn't not try to address it, I guess, is what I'm saying. Like, to the extent that we could, we tried to provide some options.
Now ultimately, so this is, we've been on the ASR plan two years, this will be our third year. The, the idea was when we structured them, was to have the base plan be zero cost. But there was such a significant hike in costs, and such a low hike in the hard cap, that we couldn't do it.
Yeah.
So maybe we can get back to that. We, we can make some adjustments to the plan. Unions will be involved because they all take it back for a vote. And we've seen, we've seen increases before. But again, the Coalition, when we discussed this with them, they were really motivated on what can we do? They don't want to strip away our benefits because they're theirs as well, right? They all have a vested interest in it, but they want to control the cause. So I think this next year, we're going to see some, some tweaks that the Coalition will take to their members to vote on, and if those pass, then they'll come here for the board to vote on as well.
Right. And I'll end with a different track of concern and questions, which is on the rollout, the communications. I think Commissioner Avery was addressing that in his question. You don't have to go through all of it. It sounds like there was a short window, so I understand that piece. I would encourage us, when, when big things like this are about to come down, as soon as we know it, you know, working with Jared, who's our communications officer at the county, and making sure that we have, and I'm sure you did emails, and I understand there were flyers on time clocks and things like that. One thing that we could do, the presentation that you just gave us, have you given that to any employee who wants to come in?
No, I haven't. I haven't been asked. During the open enrollment period, when we're pushing out the emails, we did work with Jared, we did a video. He shared that out. We have information on the hub as well. We try to put it on the hub and the website in case somebody isn't at work, can't figure out how to get to the hubs. We're putting it on the website additionally. We, open enrollment, we have about two and a half weeks of a window of time to allow for that. So we're really focused on reminding people, answering their questions at that time.
Would you be willing to give this presentation a couple of times over the next
Absolutely.
two weeks for any employee who wants to come in and?
Always. Before open enrollment, we, we go out to all of the buildings. And we don't have the numbers yet, but we're here, so you meet the people and you see the benefits, folks, and you become comfortable with them. So that when open enrollment happens, you'll call and know who you're talking to, or feel comfortable with those people. We're here, absolutely. They can schedule and come in, they can talk to their Coalition folks. If they don't want to talk to HR about it, we're available, absolutely.
And I would encourage you just to get with Josh and maybe brainstorm a few things. I want maximum ability for people to come in, even after the fact, and get their questions answered and hopefully understand it. It's, um, it's a very harsh thing to see in, in print, so. Thank you for your time and for coming before us. All right. We do not have any old business. Under new business, we have Resolution 2025-0019, approval of a request for a blanket purchase order to Zoll in the amount of $86,136 to purchase life-saving devices.
Move it.
For.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion on the motion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
What are, what are the devices then?
Captain Cronkright.
Again? It's this device right here, sir. This device goes on the end of an ET tube during cardiac arrest. And by the company's standards, it's a 25% increase in survival through cardiac arrest. We bought 45 of them last year, and we noticed a big increase. We went from a 28.6% survival rate to a 35.2%.
Do we, Commissioner Shoemaker?
Is this in the budget or is this addition?
So this, it would be in my, I have a $6 million fund balance, and it's in that budget allocation. It's no general fund dollars.
Do we have additional discussion or questions for Captain Cronkright while he's here? All right, thank you, Captain. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1248, approval of a purchase order to Printing Systems Incorporated for the fiscal year ending 2025 in an amount not to exceed $90,000 to provide for the printing of ballots for various elections. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the account listed. Been moved, is there, was there support? Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? I see the clerk and register of deeds is here in case we need him. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1306, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and District Health Department Number Two to provide for their fiduciary role all homeland security grants in Region Three. The term of this agreement is from September 1, 2024 through May 31, 2027. I heard a motion and support. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1319, approval of a request by Genesee County's clerk, register, to update the election programming fee schedule. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved, is there support? I'll support it. It's on the floor. Is there discussion? Oh, Commissioner Brown.
The committee, but I wondered if the clerk could come and talk about previous fees and the rationale for updating the election schedule.
Good evening, everyone. As we've completed the 2024 elections, we are in the middle of an election that'll be happening this May and preparing for 2026. One of the things that we have noticed in our office is that we are actually one of the lowest charges for election programming in the state. Several counties just have the election vendor program elections and charge each jurisdiction. That ranges anywhere from $700 to $1,000 per precinct. We currently charge $300 per jurisdiction. As you all are aware, some jurisdictions have one precinct. In our largest jurisdiction, the city of Flint now has 29 precincts. Across the board, $300. Our neighbors in Livingston County, Chiawasi County, Wasso County, they, uh... Chiawasi County, Lapeer County, sorry, they also charge $300, but they charge $300 per precinct, where we're charging per jurisdiction. The cost and the time of staff to program these elections is very significant. So the proposal that we have is to not charge per precinct. I think that going from a flat rate per jurisdiction to charging for every single precinct will really burden some of our larger jurisdictions. But instead proposing this system with three different tiers, I believe, is the most equitable way to do that. And that our lowest, our precincts, our jurisdictions with the lowest number of precincts remain at that $300 per jurisdiction fee. But jurisdictions that have five or more precincts would be charged a higher fee at 500, and our largest jurisdictions would be charged 750. This is per election. Charging our largest jurisdiction, the city of Flint, city of Burton, 750 is still much cheaper than having them directly pay for programming themselves. But it also encourages our jurisdictions in small elections to consolidate precincts. Jurisdictions have that option in elections such as the May election coming up. We don't have to operate every single jurisdiction because we know there'll be less voter turnout. So the benefit for them to consolidate is a smaller cost that the jurisdictions will incur. Keeping the price the same, it's just incurring a larger cost on all of you to the general fund.
Thank you.
Do we have additional discussion? Questions for the clerk, register of deeds? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1355, approval of transitional return-to-work policy. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion?
Mr. Chair, can we have, I think, is it Anita to come up and, somebody to come up and share with us the major changes to this policy? Is it a new policy, an old policy, an amended policy, and what's the, what are the?
It's, we have our risk manager.
Our risk manager, Katie, can speak to it.
Thank you.
This was her baby.
I read the policy in its entirety. I just don't understand where there were changes, if there were changes, so what?
So Katie, would you introduce yourself and then?
Absolutely. I'm Katie Shoning. I'm the county's risk manager. The first one we're doing is the transitional duty return-to-work program policy. We don't currently have one.
Okay.
So that is that, so there's no changes. It's a brand-new policy.
Okay, all right.
So just a little background here. We have some people that are out on workers' compensation. Their departments cannot accommodate whatever the restriction is that they were put off for. Historically, we haven't looked across departments to see if there's opportunities where those restrictions can be met in another department to get someone back to work. This is us all working together now to try to figure out if we can accommodate that and get someone back working at the county versus being off on workers' comp for some, sometimes up to two years.
Yes. I just had an employee come back that's been out for 14 months that we were, the department he works for, we were unable to accommodate. So if we can find other places in the county to put these people... I have some statistics for you guys, just to kind of give you an idea about how return-to-work helps with work comp. There's a 50% chance an injured worker will return to work after six-month absence. There's only a 25% chance the injured worker will turn after a year. And after two years, it's a 1% chance of that employee returning to work. So this is just going to help them be part of the work environment still. It'll help, help offset some of our work comp costs, so it's a win-win for everybody.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Just one comment. I think it's good that you are bringing this policy forward. I think it's very, very responsible, from a county perspective, that we have this, particularly for those who are out on workers' comp, who want to get back to work and to be able to have some additional opportunities to accommodate them, I think is great. The flip side of it, for the minority that generally exist, exist in many, many workplaces, employees who prefer to stay out as long as they can, then it gives you another tool in your toolbox to make sure that they're being responsible and we're being responsible. And I'll just leave it at that. So thanks a lot.
Do we have additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1363, approval of a purchase order to Motorola Solutions for the fiscal years ending 2025 and 2026 in an amount not to exceed. All right, it's been moved and supported. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Shoemaker.
This is a budgeted expense?
Would you?
The budgeted expense? I still didn't hear it.
Is it a budgeted expense?
It is, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Captain. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to postpone Resolution 2025-1369 to the, to the next Governmental Operations Committee.
It's been moved and supported. Is there, is Charles on this committee? Okay, sorry. It's moved and supported, my apologies. Do we have discussion?
I just want, I may get a rationalization.
Commissioner Lloyd is the maker of the motion, and then we'll go to Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just a quick rationalization for the motion. Obviously, there's been a request from one of our co-elected to have a discussion about this. But what I like to do, Chair of the Board, is convene the, all of the co-elected, well, particularly those who have employees that are driving vehicles, because this impacts their employees and staff, to have a discussion and receive any concerns or questions they may have. And then be able to report that in our next Governmental Operations Committee, understanding that it's our decision as a board as to the details of the policy we move forward. But I think it's a, a good show of respect and, and collaboration to at least get their feedback before we proceed. Thanks.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is kind of for, for the, for the board, this committee, I'm sorry. When will this meeting take place? Will all members be invited? Because then you have, if everybody's invited, then there's five, and that's a quorum. So who's, who's going to be on this committee to speak to the sheriff?
So as I understand it, you postponed it to our next regular Governmental Operations Committee meeting, where we would be in this setting? Or you're talking about a separate meeting?
We all received a letter from, particularly Sheriff Swanson, to be able to just have a discussion. a discussion and have some questions answered and raised and so on and so forth about that. And that's consistent with what we all do as committee chairs and such. We have conversations with different electeds. So it's no different. I'd probably do it in collaboration with, certainly you're welcome to come as vice, you know, vice chair of the board, our government, our operations chair, just to receive whatever questions and concerns they have. So you're welcome to participate in that. But no, it's not a board discussion.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Do we have a meeting scheduled already?
No, this request, I just saw this request today, and that's why I'm postponing it to the next, I've suggested postponing it to the next committee, because I like to get those concerns and bring them back to the full committee.
You know, for my part, I can say I haven't done anything and got this last night, I think. And there's no meeting scheduled, but we'll have to figure that out, I guess. You are co-chair of this committee, so I would anticipate you would be there. Do you want to continue, Commissioner Shoemaker?
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure.
So.
Is there, is there concern?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands we're being asked to postpone something and make sure everyone who was involved, who wanted to be involved in this conversation.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All right. So Commissioner Fluehling.
So that was going to be, I was going to do the same thing. My question is, do we involve every affected department head, not just the co-elected's that is, that they're going to have to enforce this policy? That's number one. Number two is, do we have a list of, and maybe this is for risk management, I don't know, for who, of everyone that has a take-home car in the county?
Yes.
I'd like to have, I'd like to see that, as we have concerns about motor pool or anything else for risk management, I'd like to know who has that. So that was going to be, I was going to make that motion to postpone also, but I think it's important to include anybody that, anybody whose department is affected by this, to, to, to meet and make sure this, this policy works.
So I think, if I may, through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lloyd.
I think that through our staff, because the department heads, particularly that are appointees of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, my understanding, or not my understanding, but my assumption is that maybe there's been some dialogue, or maybe there's, the input came from somewhere that caused a, a policy to be in front of us tonight. And so, you know, Mr. Freeman can speak more to that, those who are engaged, involved in it. My, my kinks worked out or what have you. My particular focus, unless, you know, you want to expand it to something else, is that we have county co-elected's who have to manage what we approve. And even though they don't get a final say-so, because it's our call, I just thought with the letter we received, that it's a good.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, show of respect to at least let them ask questions, and, you know, just in case they raise something we didn't think about, because we don't operate their offices.
No, no, yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Fluehling.
So, and I, and I agree with you on that. I just, since this, this came out, I've, I've gotten communicated with, by a lot of employees, county employees, that have great concerns over this policy and a lot of things in it. So that's why I think it's important, yes, the sheriff, co-elected's, but some of the things in here are, are quite restrictive. And so I think we need to make sure that this policy isn't just a risk management 10,000-foot view, but it, it will work for each department in how they use these vehicles. Because it's not just take-home vehicles, it's anybody that drives a county vehicle with unlimited PIP and, you know, providing insurance info, private info, reporting mileage as income. There, there's a lot to this policy that is going to affect every employee. And so that's why I say, though, each department may be affected differently.
Do we have additional discussion on the motion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
I, I will just say this, this has been a long time coming, I'm very happy to see the policy enacted. I would also like to say that years ago, we passed a resolution that we would be tracking these vehicles to make sure people weren't misusing them. Our residents work very hard for their income. If they get a company vehicle, they are taxed on it. They also are not allowed to misuse those vehicles if they are getting a vehicle for their job or anything else like that. These are not these people's vehicle. These are the taxpayers' vehicles. So I, I, I'm, I'm very happy to see this policy. I would like to also see us move forward farther with our policy as far as tracking these vehicles. We never put anything in place, and what we're going to do with that data, who's going to view that data, and what's going to be done with that data. And I hear there's departments that are upset about it. But in the end, if somebody takes a vehicle out and they're drinking one night and they crash it, the county's paying that bill. And they kill somebody, we're really paying that bill. So I, I love that they have, these different groups have their opinions of this, but in the end, we're elected to represent the residents of this county. I always want to take care of our employees the best we can, but we have to be realistic that not all employees are good actors. Okay, not all employees are going to make the right decision. And it's our job to do its best to protect the residents of this county and the financial stability of this county, because we can't help anyone when we're paying out more than we have coming in. So I'm happy with the policy, and I can't wait to discuss it further.
All right, so the motion is to postpone to the May 7 Governmental Operations Committee meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Winfrey.
I just wanted to remind the board that we recently adopted a DEI in all policies. And we just talked about two separate policies that did not have any reference to DEI. So before it reaches the full board, I'd like to see that corrected.
Okay, we can have a discussion about that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. All right.
I have to.
Yes, Mr. Shoemaker.
I'm sorry. How, how is the car policy going to have a DEI twist on it?
People read the policy.
What are you going to put in there that's DEI-based?
People see our commitment to DEI by reading.
Okay.
The statement on the policy.
Commitment is with action, as I said. And this board's action continues to show me they're not committed to it, but let's continue with this. Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just can't believe this.
All right. We're going to move on, and we'll have conversation with Commissioner Winfrey outside of the meeting. All right. My apologies, I've lost my place. Resolution 2025-1392, approval of the creation of the America 250.
Move it with a question.
Genesee County Commission. There's been a motion, is there support? Moved and supported? Is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Yeah, I just wondered how we came up with the amount we're going to use on this. Where, what, what analytics were used to figure out this dollar amount? Obviously, they don't have to spend the full amount, we're just, that's what we're budgeting from there, and we're going to try to encourage them to, if they can, spend less. Will this be used for wages for the committee or no?
No. Unless this board establishes a per diem for this committee, which does that through its budget resolution, there is no contemplation of a wage for anyone serving on the committee.
Thank you.
There's a portion of it that was designated, if they want to hire a firm, like the CVB, for example, wants to come in and staff that committee and help with the planning process, they have that, that option.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
How was it determined who was going to sit on that committee?
Within the, yeah, no, no problem. Let me just pull up the resolution. Within the resolution, it lists those positions. So it'll be one resident from each county commission district, who is appointed by the county commissioner of that district. One appointee from the Michigan Township Association, which is appointed by the MTA, one from the Small Cities and Villages, one from the city of Flint, because they don't fall within the small cities and they're not a township. One person from the education community, appointed by the GISD. One appointee from the Higher Learning Commission, who is appointed by the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, and two appointees from the Genesee County Historical Society.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
One, why would the city of Flint, separate than every other municipality, get their own?
Yep. So Michigan Township Association, they have an association group that includes all of the townships. The Small Cities and Villages has an association that includes all of the cities except for the city of Flint, and obviously, the city of Flint isn't a village. So we included the city of Flint, who was excluded in the MTA and the Small Cities and Villages.
Okay, I'm just, forgive me, I'm putting my thought together so it doesn't come out the way I want it to. Through the chair, if I may. My, my question is this, though. Grand Lake Township is an example, is a very large economic driver for our community. They are not getting a representative, they're just getting the Michigan Townships Association representative, which might have more of an interest in representing my district, which is, let's say, Fenton Township. So why, I just, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand why we, we continue to treat one different than others from there. And, and I know, I know where you're going with justification. I just, it's still, if you're a resident that lives in the out county, you got to go, why? Because some of these other people you put on there also have very Flint-driven values and views that, that are on there. And I'm just, I just want to make sure the whole county gets to celebrate in this, that's fair and equal. But I just don't, I don't understand that. I know the board put together, and I appreciate what they've done, and like I said, I'll move forward with it, but I think next time, some more, next time we celebrate 250 years, so. It's late, I'm going to let everybody go, I'm sorry.
Do we have additional discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1397, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the University of Michigan in the amount of $120,000 to provide monthly training to county medics. The term of this agreement is May 1, 2025 through Sep, or through April 30, 2026. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed. Moved and supported? Is there discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
I don't have any discussion. I'd just like to say I'd like seeing the contract early. I'm very happy that it's not post-dated, so thank you to everyone.
I don't, do any, you have any questions for the gentleman? This, this man with the tie's been standing over there for hours, waiting to, this is your big moment.
Do you want me to ask something?
Would you, would you introduce our guest, just so he can get some attention?
This is Dr. Florian Schmitzberger from Hurley Hospital, and he's kind of a spearhead behind this project. And it's really to bring education to the medics, to bring them up to a higher level.
Okay. Give us a 60-second on it, if you would.
Can you elevate a pitch, if I may? Thank you for having me, Commissioners. Essentially, the idea is a comprehensive quality assurance and quality improvement program, which we've been trialing in parts over the last few years. As time is limited, we would like to have this be in a more comprehensive fashion with tracked metrics in order to have didactics, direct one-on-one instruction, and teaching with patients and patient contacts in the county to ultimately benefit the people of Genesee County. So thank you for considering the proposal.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1398, recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Move it.
April 13 through 19, 2025. It has been moved and supported. I'll forego reading this until next week, given the hour. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1399, recognition of national county government a month, April 2025.
Move it.
Moved, is it? Moved and supported. I will read this one next week as well. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1438, approval of a five-year agreement between Genesee County and Vital Core Health Strategies in the total amount of $30,798,819.21 to provide healthcare services at Genesee County's jail.
Move it.
Moved and supported. And with, without objection, I'd like to ask our guests to come up. They've been waiting throughout and would like our undersheriff to say a few words, but also, you're good. Would you, would you, would you folks introduce yourselves, name and title, and then just tell us a little bit about what you plan to do for the county?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Frank Fletcher. I'm the President of Marketing for Vital Core Health Strategies. With me is Shelley Beattie. She's a Senior Vice President of Operations for Vital Core Health Strategies.
So tell us what your plan is, and what, what we're approving for 30 million-plus dollars.
So just to give you a little background on Vital Core, Vital Core is one of the largest providers of correctional healthcare in the country. That's all, all we do is provide healthcare in jails and prisons across the country. We currently serve about 90,000 incarcerated individuals at 165 locations in 18 states across the country. And that includes a pretty significant presence in, in Michigan as well. We contract with nine other county entities, county sheriff's office in Michigan, as well as with, we have a statewide contract with the Michigan Department of Corrections. But just in terms of philosophy, Vital Core is all about providing good, quality patient care. That's really who we are, that's what our focus is. We don't focus on, on the dollars. We focus on providing good, quality patient care, making sure that, that we're meeting all of our contractual obligations, and maybe most importantly, keeping, keeping your, your incarcerated individual safe, keeping you out of court, keeping us out of court.
Do we have discussion? Questions? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you. I just have a question. It had mentioned you're going to try to keep some of the employees. Are you also going to evaluate the care that was given before to some of these inmates, though, and to see which employees you're keeping?
Yeah, I mean, that'll be part of the vetting process. I mean, I don't know how much we can really get into the specifics of the, the care that's being provided prior to coming onboard, but that will certainly be part of the vetting process of the, not just the current employees, but any employee that we would interview and potentially bring onboard is just kind of their, their background, their, you know, any issues with licensure, credentialing, anything like that is going to be part of the vetting process for, for all of the employees.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
How many, how many other jails are you overseeing right now?
We're in 165 sites total. In terms of actual, the number of jail contracts, it's probably somewhere in the 40 to 50 range, including the nine in Michigan.
Okay. One last question.
Certainly.
Thank you, through the chair. And you have no lawsuits right at this time against your company from inmates or anything else like that?
I mean, we have lawsuits. I mean, we can't, we can't prevent incarcerated individuals from suing us. So we are going to have lawsuits, but we have an excellent track record in terms of our, our overall litigation record. We've got a very strong grievance process that we, that we utilized prior to getting to that point. And so our, our track record regarding litigation is excellent, but we, we do get sued, and, and you will get sued. We can't prevent that from happening.
Thank you.
Do we have additional discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say what an amazing job Derek and his crew and Captain Kenner and our crew did. This is not a simple RFP, it's, there's a lot of detail that went into this.
Additional discussion? One question I have. Recently, this board has, has put some resources into opioid addiction for jail inmates. What sort of services do you provide in that area? I know we're working with New Paths, which is a local entity, but do you have any expertise on that?
That's a great question, and thank you for asking that. In every jail that we service, especially, well, it's, every jail that we service, we have a MAT program. And with that, depending on where the jail is at, we would continue therapy for those coming in that are receiving treatment in the community. And we would continue to provide that same level of care for the, the individuals that are incarcerated in that space. In many other jails, we do inductions of therapy. That could be methadone, it could be suboxone, it could be the injectables. It just depends on that particular county. There's a lot of training that goes along with the needs of the staff and, of course, education to the patients that we would be serving as well.
Thank you for that. Additional discussion on the motion? All those in favor, oh, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you for all your help. I just had a question for this board, for this body, if I may, Mr. Chair. Didn't, are we gonna have overlapping care? Because we just approved some money to a different program for opioid abuse and care a while back. Am I remembering that wrong?
That's what I just referred to with New Paths. So, I don't know the answer to that. But we have a provider that we've allocated some dollars to. It sounds like you all have MAP, right? MAT, sorry. So, I guess we need to figure that out, I'm not certain.
Like I say, I just don't, we're already seeing an increase. And I understand they've gotta, obviously, pay people and do what they need to do. But I don't want to actually have two programs going at the same time that are overlapping. So I think we should look into that.
Undersheriff, do you have any insight on that, or no?
I believe it's just to assist with that.
Okay.
I know Josh works with Marlene.
He's agreed to look into that.
We'll get an answer before next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have it before we have the final vote. Additional discussion? Thank you for being here, we appreciate you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We have no other business. We are adjourned at 8:37.
Taking a break, you're messing with my record.
Gary, you look different today.
I know, it's late.
Think I'll do a Dale Rico. All right, we're gonna call the Human Services Committee to order. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Still here.
Commissioner Getzinger? Commissioner Kuzina? Commissioner Lloyd?
Move it, I mean, here.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move it. Support.
Propried and supported, any changes, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, ahs, 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 motion carries. Are there any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? I think the public is gone.
We're losing them slowly.
All right, any communications? No old business. New business resolution 2025-1282, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Education in the amount of $26,760 to provide for the purchase of kitchen equipment at Genesee County's Community Action Resource Department. Propried and supported, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, ahs, 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 motion carries. Resolution 2025-1331, approval of request by Genesee County's Health Department, for local health department participation and collaboration of care coordination with six state-of-Michigan contracted Medicaid health plans.
Move it.
Propried and supported, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, ahs, 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 motion carries. Resolution 2025-1378, approval of a grant award from the National Association of County and City Health Officials in the amount of $40,000 to provide for the strengthening immunization program communications and outreach capacity project. And short, it would be S-I-P-C-O-C-P program.
Support.
The budget for this is attached.
Good job.
Sorry.
It was your pleasure.
Oh, so move.
Propried and supported, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, ahs, 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 motion carries. Last but not least, Resolution 2025-1396, approval of request to submit a non-federal share waiver to the Head Start Regional Office for 2024, 2025.
Move it.
Support.
Propried and supported, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes, ahs, 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 motion carries. This committee now stands adjourned.
Well done.
What time is that? All right, call the Public Works Committee to order at 8:44. Roll call, please. Commissioner Fluehle, here. Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
He's out there.
Is coming around the corner. Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Shoemaker? Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes, Resolution 2025-1544, approval of meeting minutes, March 19, 2025.
So move.
Okay, motion of support. Any questions, comments? See none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Mr. Chair? Oh, sorry.
Public comments to the committee? Public comments to the committee? Any public comments? Seeing none, public comments is closed. Communications? Any?
No, sir.
None? Old business?
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2025-1275, order discussion item to the next Public Works Committee meeting.
We've got a motion, we have support?
Support.
Got motion of support to move Resolution 2025-1275 to the next meeting, which would be...
May 7.
May 7. Questions, comments?
I'm not on the committee, but I was just wondering why, that's all.
I had hours late. Want to make sure that the discussion is given the time that is due. Figure folks would rather proceed. Yeah, so that's why. Courtesy to everybody else. Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion?
No other reason than that, just the time.
Is the discussion expected to be lengthy?
That I don't know.
Can I ask the nature of the discussion?
Well, this has been put on the agenda in reference to a request by Mr. Commissioner Winfrey in reference to complaints about your role commission.
Okay, okay, I think I know, never, okay.
Anything further? Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Postpone until May 7. New business resolution 2025-1238, approval to renew and enhance the CrowdStrike Falcon cybersecurity platform not to exceed the cost of $199,675.96 for the period of April 26, 2025 through April 25, 2026.
Support.
Motion of support. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-1364, approval of a grant award from the Ruth Mott Foundation for the 2025 North Flint Public Safety Strategy in the amount of $390,000 for the continuation of Keep Genesee County Beautiful program services. The budget for this is granted attached.
So move.
Support.
Motion of support. Mr. Shoemaker?
What is our portion of this?
We have a portion, but the director is coming up.
There's no millage funds involved in this, this is grant-funded. This is for the Keep Genesee County Beautiful program.
I'm seeing the safety strategy, can you explain what that is?
So, that is... One of the things that Ruth Mott is looking for in the north end of Flint is for safety. And as part of that, it is increasing vibrant public spaces, which would be the parks.
So, expanding is the strategy for...
Well, no, no. Not expanding, but maintaining. So, with some of this is some of the capital improvements, like all the playgrounds that we've replaced in the city of Flint parks over, you know, the past five years. Ball field, courts, you know, those sort of things.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kudlow?
I just wanted to make a comment. At the Ruth Mott Foundation, we, the community, Genesee County as a whole, has been very fortunate with her foresight to leave so much money for the county to use for so many projects. I've been involved with it at other local levels. And there's a lot of money given to the local community by this foundation. And I'm very thankful for it. That's it.
Any further questions, comments? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-1400, approval of a contract amendment with Michael Van Balkenberg. Moved with a question?
Support.
Supported? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Where are these funds coming from?
DNR ARPA funds.
Thank you.
Got questions, comments? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-1534, approval of purchase agreement for 452 South Saginaw Street in an amount not to exceed $300,000 to cost of this purchase. Agreement will be paid from account 2132-801-00975-000.
Move it.
Support.
Move and support, questions?
I'm impressed you read all those numbers.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Yeah, can we have some explanation on this a little more? I saw...
Sure, I've got Mark Rankin here from MSU Extension. He can fill in the blanks. But essentially, you'll remember that MSU Extension used to rent space from Genesee County up at the old G Card building on North Saginaw Street. We sold that building and we kicked them out. They moved to some temporary space at the First Street Lofts as they were looking to find a place that they could purchase and move. They weren't able to find a place to purchase. They were looking at places they could rent long-term, and that cost for renting was cost prohibitive. Crim Foundation, I believe, reached out and said, hey, we're vacating our space in the Lambank Building, and we're interested in selling to you. And, because they're moving to the other side of downtown. And said that, you know, for $300,000 that we can pay for using millage money, no general fund money costs, or no general funds associated with the purchase. Genesee County can purchase that building and then allow MSU Extension to have a permanent home in the county that is substantially less for their operations out of the millage fund than renting a space long-term. So, I think that's the 50,000-foot view, but you can fill in the blanks if you'd like.
I think you covered it really well. A lot of the spaces we were looking at to rent was gonna be between $120,000 to $180,000 a year. And when Crim approached me about purchasing their space for $300,000, we could have that paid off, two and a half years, we break even, and then we're saving $100,000 a year. So, we are blessed to be on a millage. But I feel like I have an obligation to be fiscally frugal with that money, since it's taxpayer money. And I have a hard time justifying paying $150,000 for rent if I can buy something for $300,000. And so, a lot of leases we've done in the past have looked at five-year leases or 10-year leases that correlate with the millage that we're on. We're on a 10-year millage right now. So, when we were at G Card, we had a really nice deal with the county, and G Card was great. But once again, the millage money that we get is really for providing services and programs to the community and residents that we serve. I don't want to spend all that money on a lease payment.
If I may, Mr. Chair. Has there been appraisal done on this property?
I'm not sure if that property was appraised or not.
I don't know.
And I'm just asking, and I'm just gonna put this forward to the board, that, not saying anybody's doing anything nefarious, but let's say the property's not worth $300,000 and somebody's coming out ahead on the county's dime. I would really prefer that an appraisal's done before we authorize any dollars. I think it's only ethical and the right thing to do. So, I have a few other questions, but I'd like to table those. Because what I would like to do tonight is postpone this until an appraisal's done. It can be brought back to us, proving that the property's worth what we're paying for it.
Support.
Unless, just real quick, if I may, just, that's not gonna screw anything up with you with the purchase of the property. Because there's always somebody that comes, well, we gotta do this now because X, Y, Z. I just want to make sure. Thank you. So, motions on the floor, postpone this until we have an appraisal returned to us.
Supported? Do you support?
Yes. Just a quick question through you, Mr. Chair. Just curious if there's any, like, retrofit or renovation costs you have to have, like, to build it out to accommodate your operation over there?
We will do some upgrades to it. I've met with Divide by Design, and they have 10-by-10 offices. So I could put in four more offices for about $8,000. That's something I would write into next year's memorandum of agreement.
Sure, thank you.
Doctor Brown?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just want to say that when I toured your center, you had your open house over there. I could tell you guys were packed to the brim, and you need a bigger space. And you do so many great things for the community, including managing our youth commission. And we look forward to hearing from them later on. So, I hope that you can, we can navigate this challenge of getting you a new space.
Very much. Thank you.
We have a motion to postpone and support. Any further questions, comments? Motion to postpone until an appraisal is presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Any other business for the committee? We are adjourned.